Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 24th Foxborough School Committee meeting. Thank you all for checking in via the television set. So, thank you so much for being here. First, we have some people on video right now that are not attending the meeting on Zoom. And I'll just first mention that we have had no public comment, nothing in our inbox to the school committee between the last meeting and this meeting. So, there's no public comment we need to deal with here tonight. But I did want to welcome a new attendee to our meeting tonight. We have Tina Bellinger on Zoom here. We have in the attendance here both of us in the meeting as well as the superintendent, the business manager, and our artist Joe Cusack. Attending the meeting tonight on Zoom is our student representative from Foxborough High School. It's Chiara Pacini. I hope I have that right. Grade 12, right, Chiara?
Correct.
Yeah, welcome aboard. We're glad you're here. Do you want to say anything, hello or anything?
Sure, I'll say hi. I was, came and sat in on the meetings last year as well. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yep.
Okay, sorry. All right. Yeah, so I'm a senior at Foxborough High School and I'm the student council president and I'm excited to come in and listen to the meetings again this year.
Well, thank you so much for being here and the student voice to our school committee, but all the school committees across the Commonwealth are so important to us. So, you serve a great purpose for our community and for your school community. So, thank you so much. First on the agenda is approval of minutes. Let me pull up the minutes here. I wanted to get them up. There we go. Do I, the first minutes up are the minutes of our regular meeting of November 3rd. Of the three members here, does anyone want to move to accept the minutes?
I did not have any changes to these minutes. Tina, was there anything for you?
No, I don't have any changes either. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from November 3rd.
Second?
Second by Rob. So, Tina moved second by Rob. Any further discussions? I think we all said no. All in favor? 3-0, all in favor. Thank you.
Brett's there now.
Oh, Brett, oh Brett, sorry. Brett, I'm sorry, missed you. You came in, Brett's hand was up too. That's 4-0. Thank you so much. Thanks, Phil. Missed him sneaking in the background there with Starry Night behind him or whatever that is.
I'm helping Santa.
Next is the approval of our November 4th special meeting that we had.
I have no changes. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 4th, the special meeting, the financial summit meeting.
Thanks, Tina. Motion by Tina. Second by?
I'll second it.
I got Rob for a second. Thank you, Rob, again for the second. Any further discussions?
Nope.
Nope, all no, all in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 4-0, all in favor. Thank you. I think that was a quick, quick move. We're ahead, so, Joe, I'm glad you got here early. Next up on the agenda is an athletic update by Joe Cusack.
Go right in the middle, it's fine. Slide sound, you hear better?
I think you can, yes, you can, if that's about, yep, absolutely.
All right, thank you. So, I was asked to just to come talk. I figured I'd give you guys a fall season recap and then what we're doing to start the preparation for the winter. There's really no change to the fall. The tracing forms that we had at all the fields for the players and the spectators, we had nearly 4,000 responses to that. So, if we ever needed anything, we had more than enough information on who was at the fields. We did play the same team all week, every week, which worked best, we thought, to limit overexposure to multiple towns. At the end, we did do the Hockamok Cup, which was something we created for this year, just in an attempt to really finish the season with something fun. It was pretty well received. It did involve playing other towns, but at that point in the season, we were happy to get there and figured we'd give it a shot. During the whole fall, we had separate buses for each team, which I think was really important. We did that to protect our own teams basically from each other. We were sending teams at the same exact time to the same exact location on three separate buses most of the time. When the games were back-to-back, teams weren't going to watch each other play. And we think that that was really important, I think, for keeping everybody, kind of protecting ourselves from ourselves with a lot of what we were doing. For the winter, the board of directors of the MIA approved the winter sport guidance on Friday. So, it's only been a couple of days. I haven't figured it all, figured it all out yet. Easy highlights, boys and girls, basketball, ice hockey, and swimming are approved to start on December 14th. Winter track was moved from the classic winter season to fall 2, mostly due to facility access. That's not an easy sport to just pick up and play. Indoor tracks are rare. So, we need to find places that are willing to rent those facilities to leagues. So, I think that was the right move to do. Wrestling was moved to the spring. I've heard to potentially go outdoors, which would be interesting. So, we'll see, you know, what happens with that. The league, we have meetings seemingly every day now. The league agreed on a uniform approach to practices through the holidays. 12 sessions through the three weeks between 12:14 and 1:03. That'll get us through the holidays and everybody returns to school on January 4th. We're still working out the details for facility and building access for all the practices. We haven't nailed down the hockey or swim or basketball yet, but we're still working on that. So, the 12 max was agreed to by the league in the event that a school could only get in eight times. They warrant 13 practices behind somebody else by the time the season was starting. So, that was where the rationale from that came in. For the game schedules, we're going to use the same approach as the fall. One team per week, per sport. We're going to use the same order. There's no reason to change that up. So, we're going to go with that again in all sports. There are some small nuances where, say, boys hockey, there aren't 12 teams in the league. So, during the week that we would have a bye, we will play one team from the other side twice. Like JV girls hockey is another example. We may have to play one or two games. We're going to, we'll figure that out carefully. We're not just going to book anybody. But there are going to be some, by some, I mean, three or four one-offs for a game. And we're going to stick with the busing. For the teams that travel by bus, we'll continue to bus each level individually to the games. That'll be especially strange for basketball, which historically, two teams travel together. They stay for each other's games. But the league's actually did a great job even hosting teams that came in. No one really kind of dumped a lot of players in one place. Everybody was really thoughtful about spreading that out. So, that is something we're going to continue with. As far as some specific comments about the sports, probably might not go through them all. Basketball, there are game rule changes. I don't worry as much about those. They are, they basically involve where you inbound the ball, how many people are on the free throw line during free throws, jump balls, and all those types of things. The bench is limited to a max of 15 players and three coaches per team. It's not a max of 18. It's a max of 15 and a max of three. The use of swing players is discouraged by the MIA in basketball. So, we're not planning on having any swing players that would play hypothetically in a quarter of the JV game and then, you know, play a quarter in the varsity game. Players have to wear masks through the game. It's very similar to outdoors. They have to bring their own water, which will be different, but not, nothing we can't handle. The players and coaches on the benches have to be six feet apart. We were in the gym yesterday for about an hour and a half trying to figure that out. So, if you think about our gym, where the teams sit, we're basically going to use that entire bleacher section in order to fit everybody in there. With the players six feet apart, we'll probably use a little over half of it, but it's the setup of, it's really hard to send a kid 30 feet down the bench when you can put them 10 feet up above you. So, we're trying to figure out the best way to lay the kids out, you know, so they can hear the coach and, you know, be part of the game and see what's going on so they're not all tucked away in the corner. Let's see, where was I? Oh, the seats for the basketball games have to be marked for an individual player. So, they're basically having a signed seat. It can change every game, but during the game, when you go in, your seat remains empty. And when you come back off, you go back to where your stuff is. It'll be easy to track by where your things are, but that's a real unique thing to, to what we're doing. We have a, we will have a designated area for the team to meet during timeouts in between quarters. We're going to mark the floor off to the side of the bleachers and spread the kids out. For our team and then, or for, sorry, for the team under the scoreboard and then for the team on the other side away from the scoreboard, we'll mark an area and C-Gym behind the curtain. So, there's no, there's no way for anybody to steal, you know, information. That's when you're trying to make your adjustments. So, we think that'll work the best and that we could truly spread them out that way. We're supposed to have a different ball for every quarter of the game or at least sanitize the game ball. We'll probably just use a different ball. We, no reason not to. The hardest part of this, and I said this for the fall, the hardest part is everybody adjusting to the structure of the game, like the, just the process of how we have to do things. You know, going through the games, we'll have the teams come in first for, you know, the freshman level will come in first, then the spectators will be able to come in to keep them from mingling with the players at all. The spectators will sit across the gym, not, they typically, the families sit behind the benches, but they're not going to be able to do that anymore. So, they'll sit across. The game will get played after the game, spectators will leave. Then we'll get both teams out of there. Then we have to sanitize the bleachers. We have some of the spray guns so, that we think we have access to. And then basically, repeat the process. So, we have to do that three times. So, we'll, we'll add a little more time in between games, see what happens. You know, we can always adjust it as we go, but we're planning on just an extra 15 minutes between games. So, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be too bad. For hockey, again, game rule changes, mostly around faceoffs and like scrums against the boards. You're limited to how many people can go in there. They're limited to a max of 20 athletes and a max of three coaches. I went over to the Sports Center this morning to talk through the whole setup of practices and the games and logistics. The kids have to wear masks the whole time. They have to bring their own water, which is a really unique thing for hockey. Usually, that's just something the coach handles. They bring, you know, the shared water bottles. They refill them every period, but we're going to have to come up with a way to, I mean, the kids will bring their own. They're going to have to figure out where to put them to be able to get to them. The players, and they're doing this now with the youth, they have to show up ready to play, basically in their uniform and equipment, carrying their skates. The rink is making an exception for goalies. They think it's unrealistic for the goalies to, it drives themselves to the games with all that equipment on. So, there are, they do have a goalie locker room that they're letting the goalie go in one at a time to change. So, that's just something that they put, put in place. The players are going to be six feet apart on the benches and what that looks like is about five people fit on the bench. So, if you have six kids on the ice and five kids on the bench, you then, they already have, they have nine chairs set up that run next to the bench outside the boards, almost all the way to the corner of the rink where the kids will have to go sit. How we're going to, again, it's the structure of everything, how we're going to, how the coaches are going to manage that and how they're going to, the kids that come off, where, you know, they're going to go on at a certain door and they're going to come off at a different door and then how they're going to manage that on the bench is going to be a challenge. But I think they can, they can handle it. We have a great coaching staff. Between periods, it was a lot of questions of where the teams are going to go. After walking around there today, we figured they'll just stay in the bench area, just stay where they are. They're already spread out. They're off the ice, so the Xermodi can do what it has to do. We don't need to, you know, go anywhere. Anywhere else you go, there's less space than on the bench. So, we're going to leave them in the bench area and just keep them spread out. For swimming, I was there this afternoon and met with the aquatics director. The meets are going to be held virtually, which means every team races at their own facility and then the results are compared after both meets are over and you calculate a winner. It lacks the excitement of racing another person from another school head-to-head and, you know, it might affect the times a little bit, but it's a very level playing field. The pools are all the same size. It'll be the same number of kids in the pool. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how that works out. They're doing that at the club level as well, as I understand it. They also have a limit on the pool deck of personnel. By the time you count the official, any timers, scorers, you know, coaches and swimmers, the limit is 25 people on the deck. So, at the max, it would be 23 athletes and two coaches. The athletes are supposed to wait in another location between races. This is, this is something we're going to need to figure out. So, they do this now at the club level. I think the difference is those kids show up with their parents or in their own car. And what we can't have is having non-siblings sharing a car in the parking lot. So, if they race early, then they have to go outside for 45 minutes. We can't have four kids sitting in a car together and then bring them back in to do it. So, we're working on different solutions. I've talked to the coach about using some of the athletes as timers when they're not physically in the pool and just trying to keep the kids so that the work on the pool deck is the coaches and the athletes running their own meet with their own kids. There's no, you know, there's no outside pressure. There's no other people there. So, I think that's the safest thing to do. We've talked about parking a school bus outside, outside the Y for them to have somewhere to go, but even so, it's still a confined space. The kids are going to be wet. I mean, there's all kinds of little hurdles with, with that. So, there's nothing final on that. It's just something we'll, we'll figure out. Masks are required when they're not in the pool, which sounds so obvious, but there's even a mechanism in place where they swim, they, they start on one end, they finish at the same end, and then they have to go to the other end of the pool to exit where their masks will have been brought while they were racing, which works. It prevents all the congestion of kids getting out of the pool while people are standing there waiting to start the next race. So, it makes sense. You know, it's just another, another thing we'll have to do. The final thing is spectators. There will be a QR code at our gym for the players, the coaches, and the spectators to check in as appropriate. We're probably, and I'm saying probably, this is stuff we're still talking about, we're probably going to give out lanyards like we did in the fall to get family members in. The Hawk principals today agreed to continue the policy of no road fans. The athletic directors were in favor of that, brought that forward, and the principals agreed to it. Part of that is honestly due to the thanks of all the cable access groups in the league. You know, Mike and everybody at Foxborough Cable Access are fantastic. I know at the end of the year, he was sharing emails from extended families of kids from other schools who, whose parent, you know, grandparents got to see them play their last game because they were somewhere in a remote area and saw it on the internet. So, it's really, it's, it's been incredible just to have that. We literally just finalized our schedule today. I just talked to Mike before this that I have to get him the, the schedule so we can try to make it work, but we don't have any games until January. You know, we've got time, so hopefully, hopefully it'll work. The other schools are also going to be broad, live streaming games. So, you know, it's not like the fall where you can see from a parking lot or a neighboring field, like you can't see into a gym in a brick building. So, you know, we're trying to provide that, that viewing experience to everybody. So, that's something that we thought was really important. We're still working on the spectators, you know, at the rinks. Right now, the YMCA is not allowing spectators, that is purely due to a spacing issue. There's literally, if you haven't been on that pool deck, there's literally nowhere to go. You are just trapped over there. So, for hockey, the spectators is going to have, where they sit is managed by the rink. We're going to manage the access at those games, but we haven't, again, figured out quite what we're going to do there. And the last thing is we're going to mark our seats in the bleachers at our basketball games so that family groups can sit together, you know, each, each, so they don't all mix up and all the dads go sit together. And we're going to have to enforce that. I know that's an absolute ton and I was trying to go fast in the interest of time, but you know, the punchline is really, it's a, it's the same solution we tried in the fall. We're worried about the kids being safe and the coaches being safe and, you know, the people that work at the games being safe and that's, that's the number one thing. You know, so we're really going to follow that footprint that we did in the fall as closely as we can because we really do think it was, you know, the right way to approach it. And like I said, we have time. We're not starting from, from now, we're not starting for over two weeks to even practice and then it's another three weeks till the first game. So, there's, there's a lot of time to evolve these, these thoughts and come up with the right way or a wrong way or change our minds, but it gives us time. So, I'm happy to answer any of the 8 million questions that people probably have about this.
Thank you, sorry. I should wait. No, I won't do that. It's all caught. Who is responsible at the ice rink for the sanitation? Is that the ice rink and, and at the, and at the aquatic?
Great question. So, what they told to me today was that the, the hockey rink they're in charge of after the kids leave, the same scenario, after the kids leave, they would sanitize the benches and it takes them, whatever they said, 10 minutes to go through the facility with the guns, with the spray guns for the spectators and the benches. They're the facility operator. There's two distinct things, the facility operator and the activity organizer. So, as the facility operator, they're in charge of sanitizing. Same thing at the Y. They told me that every, they're open to the public as well when we're not there. And he said the, the last 10 minutes of every hour, they clear the pool, clean everything. They spray the whole pool deck down and then they let the next group back in at 3 o'clock. So, all these places have already set up, like these places have been open. So, it's not a unique challenge to them, but they're, they're responsible for, for keeping that place clean.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from any of the members?
I just want to commend Joe and everyone, you know, at the MIA who has given so much thought to the level of detail, Richard. I mean, it's amazing the thought that's gone into this and, you know, we want our kids to, to continue to compete and this will allow them to do so. So, thank you, is all I have to say. You know, it's such a challenge this year and I know the kids will be good. Our kids in the fall stepped up and did everything they were asked to do and it's going to be even more challenging for the indoor sports, I think, but I know our kids are up to the challenge. So, you know, good luck and we'll be rooting for all of you and we'll be rooting for our athletes for fall 2 and in the spring as well. That's about it.
Thank you. Brett, anything?
I just want to reiterate what I had said during our last meeting, that all of your efforts collectively are felt across many families in that, that, that the, the ability to simply just get out and play has been a lifeline for so many kids and parents who want to see their kids healthy. And so, I, just knowing on the youth end of things and then seeing it in high school and other places, it's just such a tremendous amount of work to thread the needle and do, do all of this responsibly and, and field a team in any sport. And I just, seeing the, the benefits in kids that I know and my own children at home, it's mostly just a, me saying thank you. So, it's, it's really well worth it and it's proof to other places who aren't here who said, oh, kids can't play whatever in a mask. Guess what? They can. It's just annoying, but they've done so and they've stayed safe. They stayed safe and the, the increased rates we've had in various places is not because of youth sports. So, thank you for all that.
Yeah, I think it's, I just want to add one thing that I forgot about was that, I just got to say in the fall, I, I did not run into one person at any of these events that didn't understand why they couldn't be on the track, couldn't use half the field while we were practicing, couldn't come into the facility because they weren't, they didn't have a pass from Foxborough, they couldn't, I got, we got no grief from anybody. We had three or four people working at every game. There were more than enough people to yell at if something was wrong and not one person from, from Foxborough or honestly, the other towns who, you know, I'm sure it's not unique to them and/or us, but people do find ways to go watch games from outside facilities. And they were respectful. They didn't push it. They didn't complain. They stayed where they needed to be out of the way. And it was, it was, it made everything really easy when everyone gets on board with it. And I'm just hoping that everyone can collectively get on board with the winter too and we'll, we'll just go through as smoothly as we did.
Well, thank you. I think my only, mine's a question and maybe a comment too. I've, I've been fortunate to hear a lot of stories across the state amongst sports and leagues and schools. And I was curious what the feedback you got from our students and our coaches. I've heard a lot of positive, you know, feedback about just being able to play and then everyone kind of adjusted, albeit some modifications that were a little funky and different. But what did you get for the feedback from our students just to have the opportunity to play and our coaches to get out there? Was it positive?
Yeah, I think, I think the kids show it differently than everybody else. They just go out there and play hard and that's their, that's kind of the way they express it. That's their emotion. They don't spend a lot of time, you know, thanking people for stuff, but just watching them go out there and, and work just as hard as they always have was, was enough to know that it meant a lot to them. The coaches were most of the time just excited to be out there and then, you know, we, to be honest, we were on them a lot about reminders. It's a, it's a process thing, especially if you've coached for a long time. You have to change the way you do everything now because we have to wear masks and stay apart and, and everybody did their best. That, that's what I can say is everybody did their best and everybody took the feedback that we gave them the right way. And I think, you know, I think the winter coaches that I've talked to, all of them are just dying to start and it has nothing to do with, you know, there's no playoffs anymore. There's no, right now, there's no postseason. So, they're just, they want to get out there with the kids. They want to coach. And I think, I think everything that's, you know, like, I don't know if they're feeding off the winter, the fall coaches, but it's, it seems to be flowing through it the same. Like, we just want to get out there and we just want to coach and they just want to play and let's, let's go. So...
That's good. That's good to hear because that's, that's what we're trying to do, right? Get the opportunity. And the final thing is just to thank you and all the ADs for the Hockamok League, for all that you're doing for our schools. I think it's very clear that the schools across the Commonwealth are putting in the procedures and the protocols in place to make, keep our athletes safe and they're standing by those protocols. So, this is not our schools and this school, Foxborough, is not being run by fly-by-night. It's attentive to the details and all the people are following those rules. So, thanks for doing all of that and keep up that good work. I know it's been done in the past, but also in, as we go forward in the winter. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just like to reiterate what's already been said. I know from all of our meetings how much planning and detail and reading and really being able to digest all of the new rules and everything, the amount of time that that takes and then as well as all the meetings you have that you've spoken about with the Hawk League and the rest of the ADs. It is a tremendous amount of work and just being able to figure out the logistics of it, it is appreciated. And in the check-in survey that we'll be going over a little bit later on tonight, that came out loud and clear from parents. We know the social isolation that students are feeling by not being able to be in school full-time is very real and having the opportunity to be involved in something like sports has really made a big difference as far as their own mental wellbeing. And parents were very appreciative that we were able to put the protocols in place and still give the opportunity for students.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Good luck navigating all the winter.
Thank you.
We're on time. We're making good time, everyone. Well done. Next is our world language curriculum review. And I think on our Zoom call, we have Dr. Mello and Christine Smith. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yep.
And I have, Dr. Mello, I have, and Senorita, I have the clicker. So, if I'm not going through the slides fast enough when you're presenting, just kind of give me a nod and I will try to go through them and keep up with you at the same time.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. So, you may recall that last year, the world language department had engaged in their curriculum review cycle and due to the closure and all the challenges we faced at the end of the year, we decided to hold off on their presentation until now. So, I've congratulated Senorita on having the perseverance of a much longer review period than intended. There's been a lot of anticipation building up to this evening and I know after tonight, she will sleep much better. So, to begin with, I just want to thank the members of this committee. We had a great cross-section of representatives from the elementary, middle, and high school. Obviously, we had Christine Smith representing as the world language department head and also joining her from the high school was Marta Abey. She teaches Spanish at the high school. We also had from the middle school, Rachel Cardone, who teaches Spanish, and Jen Savonis, who teaches French. So we had the both languages represented there, which was great. And then from the elementary level, we had Muriel Montoy. And interestingly, we had Anne Farrell, who is an elementary special educator. And we did that intentionally so that we could offer some different perspective to the team, which I think was definitely an asset through the process. So as you know, each year when we engage in curriculum review, we have a certain process that we go through. So 2019, 2020 was for world language. It's worth noting that in 2013, the American Council for Teaching Language, Foreign Language, they had their, they made a lot of recommendations on the assessment towards proficiency then. So that was actually a big consideration in this review, even though it wasn't a formal goal. There's a lot of discussion about how do we measure proficiency? What do our assessments look like? And what are our goals? So you're going to hear that as a theme throughout the entire review. Just as a refresh for those who may be experiencing this for the first time, when we gather for curriculum review, we have a very set procedure. We start with some questions, focus questions, which helps us define some goals. And then it's followed by research. We typically do some quantitative and qualitative research in the form of surveys. We also refer to the literature on the best practices, what's been recently published. Sometimes there's new standards, not in this case. And then we obviously want to see what's going on in the landscape. So in this particular case, members of the committee connected with other districts across the Commonwealth. Because as I think one of the things we're very proud of in Foxborough is that we actually boast an elementary world language program. And part of this review was really assessing, how is that working and what value does it add? So they were able to consult with other districts who also have that component. Following that, they were able to analyze that data, look for trends. They surveyed parents, teachers, and students. And tonight, they're going to present an overview of the whole process and, well, they, it's Christine, and I'll be here to help you. You'll be presenting your recommendation. So I will turn it over to you to share the goals that your committee came up with.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you very much, Allison. Is my volume okay? You guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm really excited to share with you our curriculum review for the World Language Department. It has been a long time coming, so we'll get started. And thank you for the introduction, Allison. That was perfect. So the goals that we decided upon after doing, going through our process of focus questions and everything is, number one, to redesign the elementary program so that expectations and goals are reflective of the current format. Number two, to identify necessary adjustments to instruction and assessment to transition to the organic world language and comprehensible input approaches. And number three, to identify if and how the world language curriculum can support the district's SEL, the Social and Emotional Learning objectives. Okay, moving on to the next slide. So we did, we did do a lot of research and it came in a lot of forms from reaching out to other schools, talking to experts, and just reading professional literature online. When researching best practices, we identified that teaching with comprehensible input was a current best practice. The theory is that after receiving large amounts of input in the target language, students will eventually be able to produce output, which is language, their second language. This theory and this method mirrors the natural language acquisition that takes place in children. Children receive hours, thousands of hours of input before they're able to produce output. This theory of following natural language acquisition also attracted us to a teaching technique called the Organic World Language Method, which is also mentioned several times in this report along with comprehensible input. Several members of the World Language Department received organic world language training in the summer of 2019. And it demonstrated how language learning can be student-driven. It really can be the language that organically arises when students are having, in conversation or playing and just being together. This method also demonstrated how to use movement and play in the classroom, not only to enhance the language learning process, but to also create a sense of community and lower anxiety for students. Research shows that anxiety and issues of self-esteem are linked to the ability to acquire a second language. And therefore, the positive and safe environment that we create in our world language classrooms plays quite an important role in the learning that is able to take place. Okay, next slide. Going on to goal number one. So our first goal was to redesign the elementary program so that expectations and goals are reflective of the current format. Currently, our one through grades one through five meet just about two times a week for 80 minutes a week. We're to identify best practices for the program design and ensure that elementary language teachers are trained in these instructional strategies. And make sure that all stakeholders are aware of the expectations and goals of the elementary program and develop strategies to promote it. So this was a big goal. This is a hefty goal. Let's move on to our next slide, please. From our surveys of classroom teachers and parents, it was evident that the expectations of the elementary program were not as clear as those that we have for our middle and high school programs. We found that the lack of clear expectations at the elementary level caused frustration for parents and students and teachers alike. So this presentation, I consider to be an opportunity for the World Language Department to begin communicating with the community what experts know about the timeline for language acquisition. So I'm just going to give you a little, little bit. Research shows that it takes 150 hours of language instruction to be able to advance from a novice low to a novice high proficiency level. So 150 hours, in a normal year, our students in grades one through five receive about 37 contact hours. So that takes, after about four years, our students will have gone from novice low to novice high. And that takes four years in our current program model. So research related to the teaching with comprehensible input method agrees that acquiring a second language takes time and it takes a lot of input before we have output. So that's okay. We're, as teacher, we're language teachers, we're all comfortable with that. But I think it is our job to better communicate these expectations to all stakeholders to help ease frustration and instill confidence in our program. Okay. Next slide, please. In order to get a strong understanding of the direction that we should be moving in with our elementary program, we consulted with nationally recognized expert Helena Curtin. She was very generous with her time this summer and she reassured us that any elementary program is valuable because brain research tells us that children at a young age are more receptive to language learning and it also improves problem-solving skills and critical thinking. Even though our elementary program doesn't fit into existing FLESS and FLEX models, Helena Curtin suggested defining our own program by using proficiency targets and assessing those targets with language proficiency testing. Proficiency testing results would then be used by the teachers to inform necessary adjustments that would be, need to made, be made to curriculum and instruction as we develop a successful program for the elementary level that best fits the model that we have. As seen on this slide, when parents and students were surveyed, over 80% of Foxborough parents expressed their support for the elementary program. And the majority of students reported that it gave them a head start. I would also love to share an email that I received recently from a parent of a 2020 Foxborough High School graduate. This young lady graduated with a seal of biliteracy with distinction and she's currently studying at Boston College. Our former student had tested into a Spanish class where she's the only freshman and her professor believed her Spanish to be quite advanced and recommended that rather than take Spanish as a minor, that she double major in Spanish and finance. So that was just a fabulous email to receive and it's wonderful news. And I credit the entire one through 12 language program for this access of any of our students. It really does start in elementary for us. Excellent. Okay, Allison, do you care to go over the recommendations for goal one?
So in thinking about our elementary program, which was our primary focus of our first goal, we realized that if we're going to shift to this model of instruction, we're going to need to engage in ongoing professional development. It needs to be sustained. We need to invest in it over time. We need to get people comfortable with it. So you'll see that as a common theme throughout. We will be borrowing the organic world language, which is OWL and assessment. We need to revise our curriculum documents and that will take place over time. And we'll need to do some vertical alignment of our curriculum as well. And again, we have a timeline for that. One of the things that we are going to ask the school committee to review this evening, and it was in your packet and it will be later in this presentation, is a small change to the elementary report card to better reflect the new expectations that we are discussing. In addition to that, there will be a focus on really implementing these strategies with fidelity across the three elementary schools. We know we have a complement of teachers across. And in order to do that and make it consistent, we are promoting this idea of having, teachers have common planning time. One of the good outcomes of this pandemic, and you know, I'm sure there aren't many, but this is one, is that we've learned, like this evening, how to do things remotely when we can't be there physically. So there's no more need to lose time and travel for teachers to meet. They can simply log in and have every minute of that time on collaborating and planning together. So we're really excited to leverage technology to be able to bring them together. As we mentioned at the top of this presentation, proficiency testing is really an important lever for us to assess how our program is doing and how effective it is so that we can make adjustments. So introducing proficiency testing at the elementary level and also, that would be fourth grade, and also at eighth grade is one of the recommendations. And again, we'll talk timeline later. And then one of the goals is to develop an elementary website so that parents, one of the issues that we saw in the data was the communication and people not really understanding the goals and the value of the world language program. But by creating that website to promote early language acquisition and really help parents understand the path to the seal of biliteracy, which I know we've talked about with this committee before, starting with students at a very early age. So I think that sums up the recommendations. Did I leave anything out, Christine?
No, that sounds great.
All right. So we'll go on to goal number two.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Goal number two, identify necessary adjustments to the instruction and assessment to transition to the organical language and comprehensible input approaches. So over the past few years, several teachers, especially those at the middle school, have been attending professional development and strategies for teaching with comprehensible input and have been sharing their successful lesson ideas with colleagues. As seen in the teacher survey on this slide, about half of the teachers were not comfortable with the new AL strategy. And what our department really would love more than anything is consistency and professional development in order to allow for better collaboration. And we were fortunate to get started on that this summer where most of us were able to attend some comprehensible input professional development virtually. The world language teachers also desire training that is ongoing. So support throughout the year, over the span of a few years, while trying out these new strategies in the classroom would make a huge difference. We'd have the opportunity to ask informed questions and every PD opportunity would be more meaningful because we'd have real-life experiences to compare to it. We feel strongly that that combination of good, ongoing professional development along with time provided to utilize what is learned will increase the success of any professional development topic that we tackle. Thank you. Next slide, please. Here we have two quotes from the World Language Teacher Survey. So from these two quotes, we really see a list of about four common denominators, four things that world language teachers feel we need in order to be successful. And Allison alluded to some of them already. Vertical alignment of curriculum from grades one through 12. Again, a lot of shifts have happened in the last seven or eight years. Common planning time, not just within the schools, but also district-wide. Rubrics that are user-friendly for students and teachers, and supplementary resources to support current instructional practices. Goal two, recommendations. Allison.
All right. My internet just has been a little spotty. So flag if you can't hear me. Wave at me. K.R., you'll wave at me, right? If you can't hear me.
Tell them to shut the camera off.
So looking at the recommendations for goal number two, I think one of the things you'll notice is that they are almost 100% identical to the recommendations for the elementary program, which makes sense in the context of we are trying to pull this all together vertically. So as Senorita mentioned, we had teachers at the middle school who had been experimenting with this organic world language and comprehensible input already. So it's actually stretching up through the high school and down to the elementary school. So I won't bore you with repeating these same recommendations, but they're basically the same, ending the proficiency testing. As I mentioned, the vertical common planning time is probably one I didn't speak about. So I mentioned the elementary teachers getting together, but we're trying to create more opportunities to get together vertically so that everybody is on the same page and really supporting that vertical alignment. And then developing common rubrics. We heard in the data that we collected that the current rubrics are a little bit confusing. They don't really give the clarity and serve the purpose that they're hoping to. So we are going to continue to, in addition to the proficiency testing, explore our own avenues for assessing students. It looks a little different in the world language classroom. So that is again, work that we will tackle. And the teachers will need, as we said, some additional supplemental curriculum resources. So that would look like access to some maybe subscriptions online, some readers that they might have, and other resources that are really designed to promote comprehensible input. Did I miss anything?
Oh, that's, that's perfect.
Okay, great.
Okay, excellent. Let's move on then to goal number three. And our third goal was to identify if and how the world language curriculum can support the district's SEL objectives, which is social and emotional learning. So social and emotional learning has been a focus of the Foxborough Public Schools for a long time. The emotional wellbeing of our students is a part of many conversations that take place at the administrative level. Our research of best practices for this review confirmed that in order for students to be able to acquire a second language, our students must be motivated, they must feel good about themselves, and they must be comfortable in their surroundings. So we believe that OWL and CI, comprehensible input methods, support what students need socially and emotionally in order to, to learn and acquire a second language. And so this is something that we've kind of really always done, but I think that OWL and CI gives us a really good framework for doing this and a lot of tools for doing this. And next slide. Surveys of classroom teachers show that they're unaware of the social and emotional competencies that may be present in organic world language method or any instructional strategy used in the world language classroom. When researching the responsive classroom techniques currently utilized at the elementary level, I felt there was a potential for a lot of crossover. And I think it might be worth it for elementary classroom teachers and world language teachers to explore ways in which the world language classroom can just simply reinforce some of the responsive classroom goals. I know that they're getting to know each other, they're creating connections, and they're trying to create community. I mean, that's what we do in our classes. And to do it in two languages at the same time would be super. The survey also revealed that world language teachers who are familiar with the OWL method are well-aware of the connections between SEL and OWL. So it really is a kind of a neat method. All right, on the next slide, I really do love these two quotes, so I am going to share them with you. They're from world language teachers and they're about the language acquisition strategies that we have begun to implement in our classes. On the left, it says that these strategies validate the things on students' minds as a valid topic of conversation. It also acknowledges that each student is a unique and singular individual that doesn't have to fit a mold. On the right, it says, I think that anything that brings the class together as a group is really important for developing a positive language learning atmosphere and making students feel included. I really feel like that's what we are doing in our language classrooms. And I really feel it, and it supports the social and emotional learning competencies. So after being trained by OWL, world language teachers could clearly see how games can be played for, for just, more than just the idea of having fun while practicing a language. You know, research shows that students retain information better when associated with movement. And Anne Farrell was great to have in our committee to help, you know, support this, you know, this research because she knows that that is true. Forming a circle and getting elbow-to-elbow with your classmates, which is a big part of OWL, creates a sense of community and breaks down barriers. And brain breaks, even when done in the target language, lower anxiety that students may feel when being asked to speak or perform in ASL, French, or Spanish. And if we as a department can help support an initiative that the district finds important and it's good for children, we feel we should do our best to incorporate it into our classrooms. And it's a win-win-win situation for everybody.
So I think when looking, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I think at looking at these recommendations, I just want to touch upon something that Christine mentioned. Having Anne Farrell there as a special educator, an elementary special educator, it really enhanced the perspective of the value of some of these things. This is very natural to how we run our elementary program anyway. We operate in small groups. We do a workshop model. We engage in games. Students have that opportunity to have some autonomy over their learning. So this was a much more natural fit than the previous structure of our program. So when we talk about that first goal of revamping our program, that's really what we're talking about, so that we can really make it more consistent with what the elementary student experience is in all the other classes that they participate in. And to have these, this was the news to me, that there was this great SEL benefit. Of course, it made perfect sense once I started talking about it and hearing about it, but I was just excited to know that this does enhance such an important part of the student experience at school. And now more than ever, we know how important that is. So with that said, one of the things in the recommendations, after we obviously develop a plan and fully implement the OWL and CI and other strategies with fidelity, is really to provide ongoing support for teachers with those strategies, but also with SEL. And a couple of teachers wrote in the survey that they would love to continue learning more about SEL so that they can enhance the opportunities that they are finding in their classroom, which I thought was really exciting. Another big piece was, how do we let people know that this is a value that's added by our world language program? So thinking about how we can use our websites to share with the community, with families, that the world language program, whether it's French, Spanish, or American Sign Language, does enhance the social, emotional learning of students. And then collaborating with classroom teachers who may question, you know, what are the students getting in the elementary in particular? Like, that was the quote that Christine shared earlier, like, what is the, what is the world language program? Is it giving them enough to go to middle school? And adding this piece, saying, yes, it is, we're getting enough in there and it's giving the kids a head start and it's enhancing their social, emotional learning, I think a really important point of communication that came out of this review. So thank you for that.
All right. So overall, just putting some of our needs on one page, investment in proficiency-oriented, comprehension-based, and language acquisition-driven supplemental curriculum resources. Annual teacher subscriptions to online resources that allow for student engagement in reading, listening, writing, and speaking in the target language. And we're noticing that a lot. There's a real And we're noticing that a lot, there's a real shift to really buying into annual subscriptions to things that are updated annually with new materials, but it's also something that you're investing in annually. So an evolving investment, basically. Investment in readers as a source of comprehensible input. Continued professional development and language acquisition-driven strategies that support teaching with comprehensible input. And support for proficiency testing in grades four and eight. And we can talk about that in our timeline, going to the timeline. You know, this first year, we've already gotten off to a good start. Like I said, this summer, we were able to have the majority of the department from one, grades one through 12, attended a virtual conference. And the awesome thing was that these videos, like 300 hours of videos have been, will be available till January for us. So anything we couldn't see in July, we could see anytime this year, until January. The elementary team is already underway. We've had a lot of change in our faculty at the elementary level as well. And so we have basically three brand-new people that haven't worked together before, working together. And yet, Muriel Monchionne is of course still there as our borough Spanish teacher. So they're working together once a week. And we have been able to purchase some of those online subscriptions to support our comprehensible input. Next year, we'd like to focus on the implementing of some proficiency testing to maybe, you know, maybe in grades four to, although the kids will not have, they will have only had one year of the CI in grade three, maybe a year and a half, or maybe if we test in the spring, maybe two years. But we also want to set some benchmarks so that we can kind of see where the kids are going over time. We'd also like to see in grade eight where they're at. Some school systems actually use a grade eight proficiency test as the way of placing students in CP or honors in their freshman year. So that's just something that some people are doing. And next year, we'll work more on our elementary communication, as we were talking about, using websites, et cetera, and we'll work on that vertical alignment of rubrics. So what we would really like to share with you now is the suggested updates to the elementary report card. I don't think they're going to be that different, but they are on the next slide. So the current report card, we have demonstrates understanding of basic Spanish vocabulary, which just is, what is basic Spanish vocabulary? So we have, we wanted to change that to listens with the intent to understand. So really active listening. Participates orally using the target language. Could be anything. So we were talking about input and output, produces output, speaking, writing, singing. You know, it's singing those songs that they practice, it could be, you know, repeating those words that they've memorized. And then there'd be no change in effort and cooperation. So that's.
I know the school committee, in your PowerPoint package, you didn't have that slide there, but it was in the memo, so I just wanted to share it with everyone at home as well so that they could see the proposed changes. I know they're subtle, but I think they help add specificity to the change in the expectation. So usually at this time, Seniorita, we ask if anybody has any questions. So I guess I'll turn it back to Dr. Berto's to see where you want to go next, or Mr. Pearson.
Well, any committee members have questions for us? And you might have to speak up, I can't, there we go, we got some faces here. So if you'd like to raise your hand, or whatever we can do if any committee members have questions. Tina, go ahead.
Hi, Christine, I, first, I just want to say, it's always such an impressive effort when we do a curriculum review. And it's, you know, absolutely such a deep dive into what we're doing. And all of our, all of our curriculum reviews have been just so comprehensive and thorough, and yours is definitely that, and I would expect no less because I know you and I know how hard you work to make our world language department the best it can be. And this is certainly a huge example of that. I guess my question is just about maybe the costs associated with some of the needs for professional development. I know sometimes there aren't any textbook adoption requests in here. So usually those are tied to a dollar amount because, you know, we know what our textbooks cost. Is there an, is there a financial implication? I mean, there is a financial implication, but is that factored into our current budget? Or will we be looking at, you know, those costs in our next year's budget as we start to put those numbers together? And about what, you know, are we looking at with that?
Well, Allison. I think I'll pick that one. Can everybody hear me?
Thanks.
Yes.
Am I breaking up a little bit?
No, you're okay.
I can hear you.
I, I don't know, hold on, I'm going to turn off my video. Does that help? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we could.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Allison.
I turned off my camera to help with the connectivity, I apologize. So wave if you cannot hear me. As part of our curriculum review process, we always have built into that the budget for some professional development. So that will already be supported by what we've already planned for. And then the resources, the supplemental resources, they can come from part of that or they can come from the budgets that we have.
Okay, thank you.
I actually, oh, I'm sorry, I was also going to say that we were fortunate enough last year to bring, use LSDO to help us bring in a nationally recognized speaker as well, and other schools came. So that's been a really useful way of defraying costs, I think, for the school system.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate you answering my question on that. Thanks.
Brent to Rob, any questions?
I would echo what Tina said, I appreciate how thorough and thoughtful this all was. I am a huge proponent of learning as many languages as you can. So I really do appreciate the fact that we start early. And it is consistent throughout, you know, if there is something available for all, for 12 of the 13 years that a student may be a part of the school system. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob. Yeah, I want to echo that, too. I think we should be very proud of our program in Foxborough. I think we all are, and we know what it has done. I certainly have a daughter that's benefited from it with a Spanish major as well. I also was really pleased to see your attention to the lack of knowing the expected outcomes that you identified, that that seemed to hinder some progress, right? I think is what you identified. And you certainly can't do everything at the same time and every single year, so I appreciate that you're going to get on that next year to really look into that. I think that makes a lot of sense, especially if you can launch them off in that, in that trajectory at the elementary level. I think that's, I think that's what I took from your report, is that if everyone understands why we're doing this and how we're doing it, and what the goals of it are, then it will put us in a better trajectory. So I thought that was very well done.
Awesome, thank you.
Any, Dr. Berto's?
Just wanted to add, you know, it's interesting, some of the things that you talked about, the deskless classes. When we first went and took the desk away, it seemed a little funny to walk into a classroom and to see students all sitting around in a large circle. But it really does add, when you think about the speaking and just the environment that they're in. So the changes that have been made, when we go back to the last curriculum review for world language, we had a large textbook order at that time. So I think that's what Tina's probably thinking back to, because we ended up having to really do that over a course of different budget cycles at that point in time. And so you can see that we're continuing to build on, when we think about the 90% target language and the proficiency, and then really exciting and moving from all that's been done and continuing to add to that, and like with the seal of biliteracy and having our students that were awarded that for the first time, too. So I think it's exciting, we talk about how extensive the curriculum reviews are, but at the same time, how we learn from what we're doing and how we continue to build with what we have as we go forward.
Great, thank you. Well, does any school committee member want to make a motion to the two changes? Or Tina, did you have another comment?
No, I just, I was going to ask if you wanted me to make a motion on the report card changes. I did have one question on that, though, before we make the motion, that, will that go into effect in the elementary report cards the next round in December? Now that, is it?
Next school year.
Next school year, okay.
Correct. Good question, thank you. I didn't think we explained about that, thank you.
So with that, make a motion to update the elementary school report cards as laid out in the world language curriculum review.
Second.
Second by Brent, motion by Tina, second by Brent. Any further more questions? All in favor, Rob was moving. All in favor of those adjustments? Thank you, all 4-0. Thank you very much. And Christine and Dr. Mello, thank you both for your time and presentation. And Christine, thank you for all your coordination of the entire department from grades one through 12. Well done.
And thank you to the rest of the committee.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Rachel.
Thank you. Have a good sleep tonight.
Thank you for the work.
Thanks, Seniorita.
Well, next is the curriculum review cycle review.
Yes.
Right, review of the curriculum review cycle.
So what you, what you have is every year, it shows what our curriculum review cycle is. And then at different times, then you vote that cycle for us annually. And we've had changes to that dependent upon what's taking place at the state level. And so that's why we have it here before you. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Mello, and she can give you a little bit more specifics.
Yeah, it's actually kind of frustrating to have to be back at the table here with this curriculum review cycle again. We had, we had switched wellness to be this year from last year because the Department of Education is revising the standards, which it hasn't revised since 1999. And they were revising the standards with an anticipated release date of this year, or possibly even earlier. In 2019, they were getting ready to have their public comment and review. And if you go to their website now, you can see that everything is stalled, understandably so. Obviously, we're in a global pandemic, and there are different priorities that the Department of Ed has right now. So it just didn't feel prudent to engage in a curriculum review when we haven't had new frameworks for this long, for, you know, 20 years, and thinking about, we have no idea what the changes are going to actually be. So we thought we would postpone it a year, with fingers crossed that the new frameworks do get released, and then we can do a really thoughtful job of making the recommendations that we need to make based on fulfilling the vision of those frameworks. So that's basically why we're here, is to propose that change. And I don't know if you want to add anything else, Dr. Berto's?
The only thing I would add is you can see by making that change and pushing it forward a year, it then shows three different curriculum reviews in that. We will not have three different curriculum reviews, but we really need to go back and assess which one we would come back to the committee to say we need to push off for the further year, to the, to the next year. So although you see three there with science, technology, engineering, and fine arts, which includes music and the visual arts, which are large, we need to determine really what's the best based on the current frameworks and where we are as a district, and which one would remain there. But as you can see, that's the last one, and we're going to have to redo the entire cycle going forward anyway.
Right. And I do.
And usually, that decision is well-informed by the changes to the frameworks. So that would be looking at, as Dr. Berto said, where are we with the STE standards? Where are we with the fine arts? And where are, we know where, we hope we know where we'll be with the wellness, but there's no guarantee that we'll even be ready next year. So I guess we'll have to wait and see, and we'll be back here at the table again.
Rob, did you?
No, no, I.
Yeah, thanks for identifying that there were three there. I was going to ask that question, are we really going to do three? I mean, talk about spreading yourself then before you even start. So I thought, thank you for mentioning that. Do you think you'll get, you'll, you'll come back to the committee during this school year with a plan, or are you thinking to readjust, to readjust?
I would anticipate that it would be at the end of this school year, we'll have a better idea, and then that way we can come forward with multiple years as we move forward. The hard part, too, when we think about any of the curriculum review cycles, particularly at the elementary level, because elementary teachers teach everything, a little bit different when we think wellness or some of the visual arts. But for instance, with science, a lot of times you're drawing from the same groups of educators.
Right, right.
And so time, they're not able to serve on the different committees that they might want to.
Got it, got it. Well, yeah, and I'm not looking to pressurize, I just figured I'd ask the question. So, you know, we have a kind of a little target out there, maybe by the end of the year, if we can pull it off and do it.
Yes.
So that's great. Brent, saw a thumbs up, any good?
Do we need to make a motion?
I think we probably need a motion to, I think the motion is to move the wellness curriculum review from the 2020-21 school year to the 21-22 school year.
So moved.
Brent moved.
I'll second.
Seconded by Tina. Any more discussion? All in favor? 4-0. Thank you all for voting. We have moved into a juggernaut of three. We will solve it. Next is Dr. Berto's and Dr. Mello, I think, and the school principals are here as well on camera. Many of them are here on camera, thank you for joining us, to talk about the parent check-in survey results.
Yes, so thank you. We have, as far as our principals, we have Mrs. Myers-Pacla, the high school principal, Ms. Frazier, the Hearn principal, Ms. McCarthy, the Borough principal, Mr. Stanton at the Taylor, and Mrs. Campbell at the IGO. And then we also have Mr. Hyer here as well, in person, when we get to some of the technology survey results, in case there's any questions. So he's joined us as well. So thank you to our principals for joining us. This was a survey that we launched after we had been in school for six weeks, and we wanted to wait until we were in a little bit into the hybrid model to see how things were going, to check in with our parents on a number of different topic areas. And then we will continue to check in with parents at different points of the year. So this survey was launched, as I said, six weeks that we were in, we've now completing 10 weeks of school. And the purpose of the survey really was to get feedback from parents and guardians to help us with what's working well, how they feel about all the safety measures and protocols that we have in place, at the same time assist us in our ongoing planning going forward, when it has to do with safety, when it has to do with student learning, our curriculum instruction, obviously, our learning environment, and make any improvements of things that we can that are within our control. Clearly, there's going to be things that are out of our control. And principals are using the information, too, at the school level to inform what's taking place, because it looks different from elementary, particularly with our learning models for middle school and high school as well. So we launched the survey, and that was launched on October 23rd. We sent out a reminder to parents and extended it for a little bit of time, and that garnered an additional 240 survey results by extending it and sending out that reminder. So overall, we had a 51% response rate with our families, and that response rate represented a really good cross-section of our families when we look at across each of the schools. So this slide here, if you just look at the color wheels for each of the schools, the first one is a bar chart because that's representing the Borough, where we have preschool in addition to grades kindergarten through four, obviously, the middle school and the high school. But just a quick look at those color wheels, it's really well-balanced when we think about the representation. So that, that's something that we look at. At the same time, when we look at the response rate there, so I had said that, you know, that it's a 51% response rate, the response rate at the elementary level was anywhere from 41 to, or 36, 36 to 46%. At the middle school, we get a 41%, and at the high school, a 33% response rate. And that's typically what we see with, at the high school level, some of the response rates do tend to go down with our surveys. We were looking at students in all of our cohort models, so students that are in-person in our hybrid model represent cohorts A, B, and C. And our students that are fully remote, which is 5.4% of our student population, because we've had, you've heard me say before, just under 6%. We've had a number of students that have returned from fully remote to our hybrid learning model, and the response rate from our students that are in fully remote cohort D was a 39% response rate. So the first question that we asked was the overall experience that families felt as far as all of our safety protocols. And it was on a scale of one to five, not so great to very good. And our average was a 4.4, which told us that families felt really comfortable and confident with the safety protocols and procedures that we had in place. So we additionally asked if there were other comments that families wanted to make, in addition to just saying the one through five. And out of those 204 comments, the themes that came through was the overwhelming support for what the, what the schools had done, as far as communications, as far as procedures that were in place, the protocols, and all of the management of the new safety protocols, from everything from all of our blue circle dots that are painted out in front of every school and every entrance, to all of the sanitizing and the cleaning and everything that's taking place with facilities, et cetera. When you. When you think about 204 comments, there were less than a dozen that actually were negative, if you will. And that had to do, when it came to not all of the windows on buses being open, because that's one of the things that we talked about as far as, yes, we've reduced capacity on buses, but also cracking the windows. So it wasn't mentioned enough to be able to put it there as a theme, even though there were less than a dozen, if we wanted to make sure to acknowledge that that is something that parents felt that was still really important. And then at the same time, distancing during lunch. So you may recall that we've moved all of the tables out of the cafeteria and their desk in the different places at the high school, the three areas for lunch, and then in the cafeteria at the middle school. So that was a comment in that the feeling of when students just take their mask off, it's just still a little bit uncomfortable, because they're so accustomed to having their mask on. So if there were any comments to taking their mask off. The families felt really comfortable sending their students to school, and again, commented on how well-prepared, and then also how well-provisioned we were when we think about PPE and all of the safety protocols. So you have a number of just quotes that are there that were taken from elementary, middle, and high school parents that I thought represented the majority of the comments when we think about those themes that were coming forward. So again, the comment that I made as far as the school bus, the cracked windows. But the rest you see here are all very, very positive. And I think it really speaks to all of the work from facilities to food service, to the principals, to the teachers, to all of our staff and everything they've done to be able to ensure that our students feel safe and comfortable. So even with positive cases, I'm happy with and feel comfortable with my student in school. Because we have, we knew it was a matter of not if, it was a matter of when, and we have. But even to see comments such as that were really good to see. There have been no snags in terms of safety, and I feel more comfortable than I expected to. There were a lot of comments about either their children had a little bit of anxiety about going to school and didn't once they actually got into school. And you'll see front and center there, and I think it's so important because it involves the work of so many, that school leadership in Foxborough worked very hard to make thoughtful decisions about the learning model and safety procedures. I appreciated learning about this through emails, the virtual town halls that we had, which Foxborough Cable Access helped us with, and also watching school committee meetings on Foxborough Cable Access. So I think having a variety of ways to get the message out there was really helpful. The overall experience when we asked this question of families from very good, this is working well for my student, to good, there could be some slight adjustments, to it's not working well for their student. We saw here that there were 82% of our participants that said very good to good. So really high marks, we felt here as far as the overall experience. And this was the question asked for cohorts A through C. You'll see in a moment that it was separated out, because we have different experiences, obviously, for our students that are fully remote. But those trends and themes through those 544 comments, once you go through and kind of feel like you go back to the qualitative data and the coding and looking to see where those themes really surface, and that there is no question that students are happy to be back in school, and parents are happy to have their students back in school. They're happy that we're not remote, and that it's at least some part of the day. And there were many comments even here that they would like to see their students back full-time, but understanding that if this is what we have to have at this point in time, that they'll take what they can get. And so it really was overwhelmingly positive and really appreciative of the efforts to have them in school. High marks for our elementary specialist teachers. You'll see this in a couple of different places with our elementary model being different. All of our specialists, when we think about Spanish teachers, and art, and music, and library media, and wellness, those teachers are teaching completely remotely. They're not able to see their students in person unless they're on bus duty, as an example. And to engage elementary students is really hard remotely. And there were so many comments by parents about how their students look forward to the opposite part of the day at the elementary level to engage in those specials, the amount of enthusiasm and the work that the teachers were doing. So it just, it came out over and over again, the high marks for the elementary specialist and how engaging they are. Remote days are stressful for students. We were not surprised to see that. Parents cite that students' lack of motivation is a challenge, and them staying focused on their asynchronous part of the day, so when they're not in person, which we can completely understand how difficult that is, particularly with our parents that are working from home, or they have multiple children. They're trying to manage or help support. If you have a kindergartner versus a fourth grader, it's very different in the level of support that you're providing. It is challenging for students to manage their time, particularly at the middle school level. Middle school can be hard as it is, and to have middle schoolers focused, that's a challenge in itself. There was definitely a flavor for one platform. So we started off the year with WebEx, and we did that because we were trying to provide more concurrent video streams for families. Microsoft Teams at the time, if you remember last spring, you could only see four streams at a time. And we know how important it is to be able to see and to engage. And so that's the reason to be able to have WebEx in a secure environment. It has not proved to be successful with even all of the work with our technology department, and it's not on our end, is what we've learned through all of their engineers sitting in on classes with us. It was on the WebEx side. And there had been really good success with Teams, because Microsoft Office had expanded their virtual video streams up to 49. And that then met our needs. So you heard from Mr. Hyer at the last meeting that we are moving away from WebEx. We're transitioning currently at the elementary level to utilize Microsoft Teams now that it does have those additional video streams. The support from parents at the elementary level, as I mentioned before, it is challenging, particularly for parents that are working, and, you know, comments that, I'm not the teacher, I'm the parent. And so that part, it's really hard, and we recognize and appreciate all that the parents are doing, because we do know that that's created frustration. We also understand that sharing devices has been really challenging for families, and they've made it work. And it's amazing what they've done. We've deployed a number of desktop computers. Some families still, even though if they've taken desktop computers, are trying to make it work, whether it's through tablets, or through smartphones, or through sharing laptops that they have. And so we appreciate them, and knowing that it was out of our control to receive the laptops, but it's definitely been an added challenge. And the other theme that you really see is the workload. And that's always hard. When we think about the three little bears, you know, what's too cold, what's too hot, what's just right? The same thing can go for workload. So we would see in the data that it was, you know, it was way too much work on the asynchronous part. And then we'd also see it was way too little. You know, parents were asking for more. So we're always trying to find that balance. And I would say that parents should always reach out to the classroom teacher if they're really seeing that it's too much, or it's too little, to be able to help try to find that balance and communicate, because that's so important. The overall experience for our students that are fully remote, as I mentioned before, that's 5.4% of our population. So that's 137 students in Foxborough. And on this next slide, you can see that when we look at their overall experience, for the most part, it's good to very good as well. It's fair when we look at middle school from the data from our students. And based on the comments, that was not that surprising to us as well. You've got that independent level for middle school, and at the same time, being able to stay motivated and stay focused when so much of your work is asynchronous. Unless you are with Greenfield Virtual Learning Academy and with the Fully Live program, we saw discrepancies there in the level of engagement as far as being challenged or motivated there.
Excuse me, Dr. Burdos. At the middle school level, are you seeing a difference between, or did you see a difference between students in fifth and sixth at the elementary level versus seventh and eighth in the responses?
Yes. So we don't have as many fifth graders that are fully remote. We actually only have four. So it's not as much there. You have, our highest number is at grade seven, and that's where you see the greatest challenge, which is not surprising, too, when we think about moving into seventh and eighth grade and that level of independence of where they're having to do more on their own. And then still just middle schoolers and being focused. That part's hard. It's hard even when they're in school. So, you know, that definitely had the highest number of students as far as being able to stay as engaged and focused.
Thank you.
When we look at the two programs, so one of the things that we did do with our fully remote is that we gave them the choice of Tech Academy or the Greenfield Virtual School. And just as a reminder, the difference with Tech Academy or TECA, those courses have some live lessons and have asynchronous work. Greenfield had two different options, where you could be fully live, online, all courses, all day, five days a week, or be completely asynchronous with no live lessons at all. So really looking at and teasing out the data between those. It was something we wanted to be able to provide for families, the choice, and then at the same time, to see how both were going. So you have a table there that's showing the overall experience of the not so great to very good. Very similar, except for when you look at the middle school. You do see a difference between Greenfield and TECA, and we attribute that, too, to the percent of completely asynchronous versus the live instruction. The quotes that you see there, I think, are really well representative of all of the comments that were provided through both academies, the virtual. In that TECA, the workload's higher, thought it would be the opposite, so it was pleasantly pleased. And that's, you know, a high school comment there. When we look at elementary, you see it's a wonderful program. But then you also see doing well, waiting on some comments, or the workload. There's a lot of work that's there. And so I think that was the biggest piece that we saw within the comments, is the workload being a lot to manage. We've also heard from families that it's become better, because you're getting more accustomed to it. And in speaking with both of TECA and Greenfield, it's a very different experience than being in a school. And it was anticipated that just getting used to being completely remote in this very different type of learning environment would take a little bit of time to get used to. And we have seen and heard that from families as well. The biggest concerns and challenges across all five of our schools, what was in common was motivating my child on the asynchronous days. As far as the elementary, it was really well balanced. You see the top three being the same across the three schools. Just juggling the hybrid model, motivating, as I said, my child to do work when they're not in person in school, and then the number of hours that are devoted to asynchronous work. Again, trying to find that sweet spot, if you will, of what's too much or too little, and families trying to navigate that as well. At the middle school and high school level, both the Hearn and the high school had the same top three. So you saw consistency there. Again, the motivating piece, but what came out there that was different than elementary was the amount of screen time their children are experiencing and the need for support when children struggle with assignments. There would be comments that, I don't know how to do high school math, I can't help them. And the hard part is when they're home, the teachers are teaching the students that are in the class, so they're not available. So you would see frustration in that the teachers are not responding. But they had students, I think some forget that the students are in front of the teachers at the time, and that's why they can't. Teachers have done a fantastic job of trying to be as responsive as they can. I know that they've talked about, they get emails from students all times of the day and into the evening. And some of the times when students are emailing, which could be the middle of the night, I've heard are quite suspect. And they're trying to answer that they can, because they're feeling that struggle of wanting to be there for their students, but at the same time, trying to manage all of the demands of a very challenging learning model that we've never experienced before. So the planning and instruction side on the teachers has just been something that's been Herculean effort that you would not even imagine until you get into that. The next two, I will say, as far as the top levels that were the biggest concern at the secondary level, it came into juggling the hybrid model as well. So like the elementary level, and then submitting assignments. And that came out through, where do I submit assignments? Is it within the assignment tab? Is it within a different feature within Teams? And so we've had to work some of that out, because it could be varied by teacher. As far as the biggest concerns and challenges for our fully remote students, like cohorts A through C, you see the numbers of hours that are devoted to the work that came up at all of our elementary schools and the middle school. And also at the secondary level, like cohorts A through C, it was the screen time and then motivating their children to do the asynchronous work. When we move to the question that was asking about what are parents' biggest concerns or challenges from the social-emotional area? The top three for elementary, I don't think that it's going to surprise anyone. And that's the maintaining and developing friendships, particularly when we think about our kindergartners and our first graders. With last year being interrupted, they didn't have a full year experience then. And now having an abbreviated school day with being in half the time. Managing anger and sadness or anxiety, that came up across the three schools. And then the social isolation from friends and peers. And then again, adapting to the new learning model, that was really a close fourth when we look at those social-emotional challenges. At the middle school, not surprising, the social isolation, and again, the maintaining and developing friendships, and then adapting to the new learning model. You see the same at the high school with the addition of connecting with teachers. And again, just what I was saying before, it's when you're working asynchronously and you have questions, and the teachers are not available, because they're teaching the students that are in front of them, that part is harder at that level, which is understandable. So, you know, those are some of the conversations, you know, how can we buddy up students? And some have kind of done that on their own, at the same time. What are some other ways, strategies that they can help get support when they're not on their in-person days? For our students that are fully remote, we see the same. It doesn't matter whether you're in cohort A or you're in cohort D. It's all of our students, and they all are experiencing the similar challenges. And that really speaks to, I think, even adults and the pandemic and not being able to socialize with your peers in the same way that you have in the past. It's students, but it's adults, too. It's challenging.
That's, I'm looking at this entire list, and I am saying the exact same thing.
Exactly.
For, you know, parents or guardians who have switched to a fully remote work model, they have experienced all of these exact same things, including down to the asterisks on the last page and on this slide, the managing anger, sadness, sadness and anxiety. It's just been a prevalent, you know, that's been the prevalent energy for much of us. But everybody's had to adjust to this. So it's not surprising that we're seeing this, you know, from the kids, too.
And I think, too, interestingly, is that connecting with teachers at the high school level for our cohort D students is the same as connecting with teachers for our students that are in-person in the hybrid model. The content and the expectations, and it's at a higher level in, you know, trying to clarify questions or, you know, that part. It was interesting that the connecting with teachers, it didn't matter what cohort the student was in, that that came out at the high school level. When we asked about how children feel while attending in-school learning, high marks across. A 4.66 out of the one to five. We had an additional 134 comments that really spoke even more. Those range from a word to full paragraphs on any of these when we've asked if you had anything else that you would like to add as far as, you know, comments. There were concerns from families that were expressed more so about the outside activities that students are engaging in, that we obviously have no control over, but those behaviors that are outside of school. And then there were comments, too, that related to some worry, obviously, about becoming indoors and weather and the spread of germs, and would that increase our numbers as we move into the colder months. The in-person learning, over and over, students love to be back in school. I said it, you know, on the first question, because many times it may not have been when we're asking about safety, the other comments came along the way. The other benefits that were mentioned were the smaller class sizes. So when you think about, our students are six feet distanced in classes, which makes for very small classes and the individual attention that students are to receive, building relationships with students faster, has been something that teachers have talked about and that parents mentioned as well. Obviously, students love seeing their friends. They miss their normal schedule, that was clear. For elementary, the offline activities was mentioned, the hard copies of things to get them away from the screen and to have. And they're doing math games and they're doing other kinds of things with manipulatives or reading and writing, but that was definitely noted, the offline versus the online. The middle school, again, you saw, love being back at school, many comments of the desire to be back full-time in school, to increase the in-person days, also for socialization for our students. They're happy to be back with teachers. One of the comments that you would see, and again, it's not just one comment, it came up over and over if it's listed here, was the amount of time on in-person days going over work from asynchronous days. And, you know, that's hard, trying to find and manage that, and we're learning with every week, and teachers have never done this before. So trying to figure out how to best balance that, but at the same time, when we think about the Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday schedule, we talked, that was intentional. There were some questions that asked earlier in the year of why not do the Monday, Tuesday, and do Thursday, Friday? And that was intentional so that we didn't have students out of the building five days in a row, and we could intervene when they're not understanding something sooner. And so when you see that come up over and over about having to go over, I can't imagine how, it's already hard, it'd be that much more challenging if you had that many days out without having the in-person with teachers.
I would think if you have that large a gap and you're lacking motivation on the asynchronous days, or you're frustrated with your ability to make progress on your own on the asynchronous days, so you stop, which is human behavior for many of us, that large gap only going to mean you're getting further and further, you know, behind where you want to be, and you're becoming more and more, or less and less motivated.
Right. And at the high school, again, happy to be back, desire to be back full-time in school because of, you know, there's just too few social interactions. I have two high schoolers myself, and I see it, and I, so I see it from the personal level and obviously the professional here, and I know how much they crave the social interactions, and they're just so happy on the two days that they are back in person in school. But what we also saw, and that teachers and they're talking about, is the assessment piece. So you finally have them back looking at the amount of tests or quizzes that are taking place on in-person days, because if you have multiple teachers doing that, you could end up having multiple tests or quizzes on the same day, and if you're only in two days a week. So that's something that, you know, we're trying to figure out, and that's a work in progress. The asynchronous days, not surprising that from the 4.4 for in-person as far as the overall experience, if it's asynchronous, it's a 3.27 here because you can't duplicate the brick and mortar school is what that really comes down to. There are slightly less comments here when we look at this, but again, we still have over a thousand comments, which is a lot of data to go through, and we've read every single one of those, every principal has as well. And we really take all of that information in to see, well, what is within our control and what is not, or where are some adjustments that we can make. Again, it was really heartwarming to see all of the comments here about those that are fully remote, like our specialist teachers, and that's our special educators that are doing also service delivery in addition to in-person, they're doing that remotely as well, and they're just really having to do things very differently, and we're learning as we go, and it was nice to see it be recognized by parents on all of the comments that they made that were really complimentary. We did see that the online portion at the elementary level for Freckle, that's one of our online programs for ELA Math and Science, those comments ranged way too challenging to not enough. So that's something, again, trying to find that balance to where it's something that's not going to be busy work, but it's going to be purposeful practice, which is the goal. The lack of devices was mentioned again numerous times as far as being problematic. Signing on through the single sign-on with Clever is working well. We had the comments that went back to WebEx as far as connectivity and logging on and not being able to see the video streams. And some of that was on the user end, and then some of that was clearly on the WebEx end as well. Younger students, not surprising, really requiring a lot of support at home to help maintain focus, that's been hard, and then just even getting them on and navigating some of those online resources that were for the purposeful practice. It was really nice to see so many comments about the YMCA. And we've done calls, virtual calls with the principals with the YMCA and Kim Jennings, who is the vice president there, along with their other directors, what's working, what's not, when we hear things from parents, if it's students in a particular area of the Y while they're doing their remote. So they've just continued to be a great partner, and parents have really just said that in many cases, they've just completely saved them. Which has been, you know, a great resource to our parents. When we look at those trends and themes at the middle school level, concerns over students' grades dropping from what they have been in the past, which I think speaks to focus and motivation, because it's hard to get all the work when you're not in class, it's a very different experience. So the attending to the work at home is a struggle, and it's something that we saw over and over with parents at the middle school and at the high school level as well. The teachers not being available during the day because they're teaching other students at that time, which, you know, that's not something that we're able to fix because they have students in front of them. But what are other supports that we can think of to help better support students? Where it's buddying them up with a cohort member if they're on their asynchronous day? So those are some of the things. And when we get here in a minute, if you have questions, I know the principals could probably give some examples too. Parents talked about the work that's, and this could attribute to grades dropping, that students are just rushing through the work just to get it done. They finished by, you know, early morning, but the work is not thorough or not completed completely, are turned in to what they're used to turning in as far as work. The posting of assignments, not being consistent from teacher to teacher, that's something that as soon as I can tell you, Ms. Frazier and these comments, because we were watching these comments come in live while the survey was open, they've already been having those conversations at grade level and cycle meetings to really look at, where can we help with the consistency? And some of it's just making sure that students know where to go. And again, supporting students because it's new to them. We saw that too much of the work from the asynchronous days carrying over to the in-person days, that Wednesdays, which are the fully remote days, are a lot of screen time for students to be on. And again, comments on the YMCA for childcare. The high school, the same, that was the middle school for the most part, and the workload, again, being too much to too little, and that that varies. And it's going to vary by grade level and by course level and by students and what their own work course load is as well. So slightly less comments that were there, but again, a lot of comments. Moving to the questions that really were geared towards technology, asking about particularly the video conferencing, I have, there were a number of questions that were asked on technology. This slide is here because it was really important for us to hear from the student and parent experience for logging on the ease, particularly where at the elementary level, all of their specials are online for those students that are whatever cohort, A through D, and then even when, if they're logging on for their, if they're an L student, English learner, if they're a special education student, if they're logging on with their specialist providers in addition to what they have in school. And if we look at the elementary, because they didn't have teams, although they used it last spring, but they didn't start off with teams, because we didn't have email addresses for elementary students was the challenge there. We only had at the Borough, as an example, 21% of people that reported that they didn't have any problems with WebEx. Only 18% at the IGO, and 28% at the Taylor. So we had a high level of frustration with WebEx for a variety of reasons, from logging on to connectivity. And with that and the addition of teams being able to offer the concurrent streams up to 49, it clearly became a change we needed to make. And so that data really showed that to us based on all of the comments and the data there. Access to devices, the color wheels that you see here at the bottom, if you move from left to right, from elementary to high school, you see more of the blue of the wheel, not surprising, more of our high school students are going to have their own device. The orange is if students are sharing a device, you start to see the sharing of the device diminish as they get to the middle school, and then diminish even more at the high school. And then if students are utilizing a school-issued device, whether it was a desktop or a laptop. So we've started our deployment with our devices last week with teachers and with our freshmen, and continuing this week with eighth graders, because high schoolers are not in person, so that will continue with the deployment with high school next week. And that deployment, as Mr. Hyer had talked about, it's really that white glove deployment of the devices, they're all imaged based on the need when it comes to content filtering for security, for internet safety, that looks different for a device that's being handed to an elementary student as opposed to a high school student, and then all of the programs as well. So we are beyond thrilled to have devices in our possession. We don't have all of them yet, we're continuing as they're coming in, and to deploy those just as quickly as we can. We asked about screen time. We've also deployed at the same time a teacher survey, and we're asking teachers about screen time as well, but obviously, this is one for parents of what they consider optimal amount of screen time. When we look at the elementary level, it's consistent, the majority are the two to three hours on a screen. We know how much in time, how important it is to have breaks. So if we were to find ourself, which we truly hope that we're not, in a fully remote, because the goal is to stay in person, even if it's the hybrid model, but if we were to find ourself in a fully remote model, this is really important to think about, the amount of total screen time over the course of the day. At the high school and middle school, you see that move up to three to four hours. And then that purple shading, which was other comments that were there, where you see, when you read through those, are whatever it takes. It should be higher, it should be more at the high school level. It's a matter of just, they would write comments such as, just remember to give breaks in between. I know that my own daughter is currently student teaching right now in another state, and they are fully remote. And so at that level, they talk about wiggle breaks, and they're scheduled in to be able to get off the screen. And, you know, we talk about that even when we're in person, so it's just that much more important when we think about screen time. And that other comments range from if it were a course and they're not fully on screen, but the availability of the teacher to still be there, kind of waiting in the wings would be important. The last two questions that we asked on the survey had to do with, what are any of the unanticipated highlights that have taken place so far? At the elementary level, we had 212 comments, at the middle school, 122, and at the high school, 104. And really what emerged here and surfaced was, again, their students being able to be back in the school building, being able to see friends at the elementary level, not just in the classroom, but also on the school bus, that they're very happy that it's different from the experience that took place in the spring. The flexibility and independence was mentioned at the middle school. The teachers mentioned across the board as being a highlight. And the sports, as I mentioned earlier, when Mr. Kuzak was here at the high school, there were many, many comments about parents appreciative that students had that as an outlet as well, because it gave an opportunity for something that in some cases, it's what motivates them for school, and then it offers another opportunity to connect with their peers. And surprisingly, there were a number of comments about having free lunch. So we know with food service and how that has changed this year, there were a lot that mentioned the free lunch. But I did put, there's a number of quotes here, but I just, I'll read one of them here that was from an elementary parent. And it was, "They love going to school. They literally run out of the car, I barely get a kiss anymore." So we see that, the excitement of students that are coming in. The last question was, where are some areas that we can continue to improve? And as you can see, a lot of comments here at the elementary, 188, 168 at the middle school, 141 at the high school. And again, those ranged from a word or a phrase to full paragraph or multiple paragraphs from parents. But again, the themes that you would see, devices for sure, WebEx, eliminating WebEx, going back to full in-person, the balance of online and offline activities getting to screen time, communication from teachers. And I just really want to qualify that. It's not that our students are not, that our teachers are not communicating, it's a matter of the communication looks different. They're so, you know, busy with the students that are in front of them, the students are at home, and trying to get to everyone at the same time, it's really hard for them to juggle all of the communications that are coming in at different times. But we did see that there is that desire, and I would anticipate on the next survey that we'd see a difference there from what we saw here at the beginning. Social-emotional learning, more opportunities there, that was mentioned a number of times at the middle school, which is not surprising to us either. Going to one platform, the live teaching on Wednesdays, that would go back to screen time as well. The going back to school full-time, as I said before, at all levels. Senior activities was mentioned over and over at the high school, because, I mean, I have a senior in high school as well, and they're missing out on so many of the things that seniors normally have, and the high school's really working to think about, what can they do? They had a home court today, I know Mrs. Mychek can probably talk to that in a minute, but what are the activities we can do for seniors? Although it might look different, but again, to try to really recognize that we do have a loss there of many of those activities that they've had in the past. The consistency in posting assignments as far as the place, the workload piece that I've talked about over and over, and the timing of assignments and when they're due. So that's more from a teacher when they post something and giving some time. You would have some parents that, because teachers are giving more time, and maybe it's not due until, let's say, midnight as example, they want it due at the end of the school day, but teachers are trying to provide flexibility to students and to give them more time. So again, you know, you'd see comments both ways. So that's a lot of information, and I'm happy to go back to any of the slides that you want to revisit, and at the same time, where we have all of the principals online and then Mr. Hyer too for questions.
If I may, I would love to hear from the principals and Mr. Hyer first to get their thoughts on the survey results and then ask questions, because I do want to, I would love to hear directly from you guys, were there things in here that you were surprised to see? That, was there anything in here that you expected to see that you didn't see? Before, because I do have some questions, but I would love to get that perspective first.
Good idea.
Why don't we start at the elementary and we'll work our way up?
Let's do that.
I don't know if Mike, Michelle, or Kate, if any of you want to speak to just kind of your overall takeaways from the surveys.
I think one of our biggest takeaways is just how happy, you know, the kids and the staff are to be back. I heard the word thriving used a few times, and I guess the other word I would use is normal. Just when you walk around in the classrooms, I know adults can't come in like they used to, and so I think there's a wondering of what's going on, but, you know, we just did a recent, the school- But, you know, we just did a recent, the school council just did a recent video newsletter just to show parents that it really does look normal. It, it looks like school. So I think that's, was a lot of the feedback that we heard, so.
Thank you, Mike or Kate?
I agree with Michelle. And it was really nice for us to be able to share the parent feedback with our staff during faculty meetings to really reassure the teachers who, as we are creating this new system, that we are, all of this hard work is being noticed and appreciated. It was so nice when I was able to share remarks with my staff from parents that said things that we feel safe and we feel educated. And those are our two biggest real goals, coming to work each and every day. And when I load buses and I see the kids smiling and we're able to take our kids in and then send them back out safely to families and know that the learning and the, the real genuine love that teachers and students have for one another is happening every day, it's powerful. So I think that the surveys came at a time where staff needed to hear, we're, we're doing a good job. Are there things that we can improve? Absolutely. And we take those areas of focus seriously too. We can't change the, the global pandemic, but there are some shifts that we can make in the work that we're doing to improve. But also for teachers and the staff to really know that the work they're doing is valued, I think was really important for us at the IGO.
And I think just the small moment, everyday moments that bring joy, just walking into a classroom again. Things that I think we all took for granted. And I, I think, you know, how resilient our students are. I know that when this started back in August, we were talking, we were curious about how students would do with wearing their masks. And we dropped it down to kindergarten and they have been phenomenal across the school, all of our children. And I think, you know, the biggest part is the remote day at the elementary, trying to support our families. As Dr. Berdus highlighted, the challenges, whether it's sheer devices, our families working or just, you know, a lot has been thrust on, on our families and we realize that and we work with them. You know, and it's been nice for us to be able to problem solve sometimes, you know, with the fully remote students. We learned that there's an accommodation that can reduce 20% of the workload. And instantly that assisted several students who needed that type of support. So, you know, it's, I think our message is to continue to reach out to, to your teachers and to the staff members. And, you know, we're excited, but, you know, we realize that it's continued to evolve and we're looking forward to, to the next steps.
Thank you.
I had one piece to the elementary, just because Dr. Berdus mentioned it, if that's okay. It was regarding the Freckle platform. And I think that parent feedback was so valuable as an instant action item for us to clarify the expectations around Freckle, because it is an adaptive platform. So if students are on there beyond the recommended amount of time, the program adapts and gets harder and harder. So we realized that some students were reaching a threshold of frustration because they were going beyond the recommended minutes. So just clarifying that expectation is a really just tangible example from that, that survey that we were able to make, as Kate said, a quick improvement that hopefully reduced stress at home on parents and students and still met our educational objectives. I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Karen, how's middle school?
So echoing some of what has been said here already, I think just so happy to have students back and, and great to hear that they're also happy to be back here with us. I think we're seeing that on those in-person days and acknowledgement that, that this is a really challenging school year for everyone, for our students, for educators, for our families. And just, I think we're all appreciative of the opportunity to, to see this feedback and to really be thinking about how we can implement the suggestions that have been made and the, and the challenges that have been shared so that we can, we can move forward to, to hopefully make things a little bit easier on everybody where we can. You know, it's been said, there are some things that we don't have any control over, but thinking about the things that we do and recognizing that if students are having a hard day, then, then their teachers are too. In looking at, how do we make things a little bit easier for the students so that it's easier on the teachers? And in terms of the asynchronous days and thinking about the age of our middle schoolers and where they are developmentally, it's, it's not surprising that those days are super challenging for our middle schoolers. And certainly challenging for the teachers as well as, as they're trying to manage that and mitigate some of the challenges for the students. And looking at, you know, I, I, I think it had been stated by Dr. Berdus, the, the communication from the teachers and trying to manage what the students' challenges are during the day while, while they're at home, while they also have a live group of students in front of them. And I think the worry that the teachers carry around that as well is, is hard, because they do want to get back to their students as quickly as they can to make, to make things as, as accessible to them as possible, so.
Thank you.
That's middle school.
I guess you're last.
I am, so I'm going to say ditto to all of the above. It is so wonderful to have our students back. And again, we see that on a daily basis when it's an A cohort day or a B cohort day. And it's, you know, welcome back to the first day of your week, whether it's Monday or Tuesday, and then we're sending them off on Thursday or Friday. There weren't surprises in the survey, just really validating. You know, again, as everyone keeps saying, this is a pandemic that none of us have experienced before. So when we were planning for all of this over the summer, going into it this fall, we, we knew that there were going to be changes, we knew that there were going to be shifts, we knew that we would be learning as we went along. And so the surveys really helped us in solidifying things. It's so wonderful to hear and to have people really recognize the hard work. And the elementary schools, you know, spoke about if you walk down the halls, what you would see, and it seems very normal. And I would say the same thing here at the high school, except there's that, there's the visible, but there's also the invisible. And as much as it looks normal within a classroom in so many ways, when you can say that when classes are split in half and all and we're distancing and all, but the hard work that students are doing at home on their own, the hard work that families are putting into this, and the hard work that the teachers are doing every single day to be able to meet the needs and the challenges of the students. So all of that's, you know, a piece in there. Our heart at the high school goes out to our high schoolers, because so much is so different for them. We know our ninth graders are struggling, they're coming new into the high school and they don't have that constant everyday support of teachers live and in person and right there to help with that transition. You know, we know that things are so very different for our sophomores with MCAS still looming out there potentially for them and our freshmen. We've got our juniors and our seniors who, thank goodness, you know, we have sports. And Kiara, hats off to you, because student council and so many of our student activities are really trying to provide some things that bring a sense of normalcy to what is very abnormal and very unusual for all of us. So the survey came at a very good time. You know, I'll look forward to the next one that we wind up doing to see how things have changed or improved as we move along. And if I can take a minute before any other questions come in, Kiara, are you okay if I do some announcing tonight? She's giving me a nod over there and a thumbs up. So student council had come forward to say that they really wanted to do a homecoming and be able to keep that peace. So our staff nominated senior students who they felt really exemplified being hardworking individuals, kind individuals and contributing much to the school on a variety of levels. And then the senior class voted from that group of individuals. Pardon me if I get any of the names a little bit off. But the senior girls who were nominated for the homecoming court were Emma Dahl, Mary Claire Ernst, Shannon Egan, Pam Nelson, and our own Kiara Pacini. And for the boys, Jason Candula, Mike O'Toole, Nick Penders, Dominic St. Pierre, and Drew Young. So this afternoon, their parents were able to come to the San Burns Community Field. Foxborough Cable was there, thank you, Mike Weber and crew. And we had a homecoming ceremony. We were without the golf carts, we were without the band, and we were without the game. But we certainly weren't lacking in any spirit with the parents that were there as well. And so that video will be shown on Thanksgiving, that will be premiered on Thanksgiving. And I do want to say, so here's a first congratulations to the class of 2021. This was the first homecoming to be held at the San Burns Community Field. So that was an awesome thing to have happen. And we did have a king and queen crowned. So our congratulations are extended to Queen Emma Dahl and to King Dominic St. Pierre. And with that, I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Diana, for that great announcement. And thanks for pivoting and creating a homecoming experience that was not normal. And Kiara, thank you to the student council for supporting that as well, too. It's a lot of work for the student body to be behind it as well for something that's so out of the ordinary. Thank you.
Of course, it's fun. I enjoy doing it. We all do.
Do you want, or Erin?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Good evening. Really, really just like to echo a lot of what was previously shared. But obviously, having this survey data is very timely and it's very valuable in terms of feedback. Understanding what students' experiences are at home when they're remote learning and parents' experiences are at home really helps us adapt, whether it's just the way that we're communicating or strategies in terms of posting assignments. And also making improvements in terms of connectivity or more technical things. Obviously, this played into our decisions around, you know, continuing to, to further implement teams and eliminate the use of, of WebEx in terms of hearing people's frustrations between having to switch between the two platforms in addition to the technical problems that, that resulted as well. Pretty timely.
Yeah, thank you, Erin. Thank you.
Don't go. We might have questions.
You can stay there, yeah, you must grab a spot.
And you have plenty of room right there, so you're good.
Perfect.
Uh, committee questions? I don't know, Rob, if you want to start or anyone on camera?
I was gonna let Tina start.
I, I do have a couple of questions. Oops, am I still muted?
No, you're good.
I'm unmuted, okay. Sorry, it's getting late, it's past my bedtime, sorry. I actually have a couple of questions for Karen and Diana. When we're, with the concerns about grades dropping at the middle school and the high school, I can understand certainly all of the different issues that would relate to that. I know my kids, pre-pandemic, different situation, but benefited greatly from the devotion of the teachers to extra help after school, which I'm sure is not happening like as, as it did. But is there an opportunity, like office hours to, for students to go to their teachers at a set time on a set day to get help in math or chemistry or Spanish? Is that happening? And, you know, I know the kids are aware of it, or the parents also, particularly at middle school, also aware of the opportunity and able to guide their children in that direction? Because I, I know it always helps.
Yeah, so we have a few different opportunities for, for support for students. Our, our teachers are offering extra help, they're offering it virtually since the students are able to stay in the building after school. And their days, their extra help days, as they always have, vary depending on the teacher. And that communication comes directly from the teacher. We also have, on Monday afternoons, we have a, a staff member who's offering additional virtual support for, for homework help. Typically had homework club in the library in, in person in past years. So this is sort of our virtual version of that. And then also during the school day, when the students are here in person, for seventh and eighth graders during their, we've called it the 20 minutes. It's actually, this year, it's a 30-minute support, because we had to extend the lunch break. The teachers are using that time very intentionally to pull students to, to either provide intervention support or, or to help them get caught up on some of the work that they may be missing. And in fifth and sixth grades, that, that B core period, which is when music happens, that's being used a little bit creatively as well to give support to students during the school day.
That's great. I, I, I kind of assumed that that piece was happening, but I wasn't really sure how, given, you know, the, the huge time constraints that teachers have on them. As we talked about earlier, the, you know, they're teaching students while other students are home, remote, they're sending emails. I, I, so thank you for explaining how it's happening. At the middle school level and at the high school level, is something similar going on or?
It is actually. The suggestion that teachers have been giving to their students is when that two o'clock mark hits, for the students that are in on an A day, those students who are on the synchronous day on the B day, that they come in right at two o'clock on the day that is not their in-person day. And then while those students who are in-person are, are going home, then there's a little bit of help for the kids who are remote on that day. And then by the time the other students get home, they can zoom in or they can call in. You know, they can go in on Teams rather and be able to meet with their teachers that way. And they've done extended hours too beyond their contractual day of course. We also have our tutors in the building. We have our, our math, science tutor and our humanities tutor. And they're on Tuesdays, the remote Wednesdays, so students can have access there. And also on Thursday, so they're hitting the, each of the cohort groups that are there as well. Our NHS is actually going to be starting up during the day and offering services to students in the media center. And they'll be socially distanced, but to be able to help there. I can also tell you that teachers are spending their prep time and their, their duty time, if they have the ability, to be able to access students via computers and they're answering their emails and getting back to them that way through Teams as well too. So there's a wide variety of different ways that, that extra help can certainly be accessed, no doubt about it. And beyond ours as far as work being submitted and teachers getting back to the students and all too.
If I may also share just another example, we made some slight adjustments in seventh and eighth grades starting in the second quarter to the elective and enrichment periods. In seventh grade, we're, we're calling it the win block, what I need. And the teachers worked with the students, they did a student interest survey. And then they also took data from the students' assessments from the first quarter to identify where their greatest needs are along with their interests. And actually have some really great courses running for the second quarter that provide hopefully what every student needs. So for some students, that may look like some enrichment, for other students, that, that may look like some intervention. And it's fluid, so based on the data, that, that could change over the course of the year so that students are continuing to get what they need. And in the eighth grade elective, we've added some additional electives and identified students who may need some additional support with organizational skills and study skill strategies and making sure that they're getting that very intentionally during the school day, every other day.
And also too, I'll jump in, and this will be starting in the second term as well for us. We're putting the final kind of dotting the i's and crossing the t's, where we've identified students who have been struggling in this first term in particular. And they're going to be joining kind of a special during a, during a study period, an organizational grouping to get students started. You know, what do you have, what do you need to do, and how can we organize you and best move you forward? So we're looking forward to that starting as well.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of support being provided for students, you know, in these unusual circumstances. So thank you very much. I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you. Rob?
I have several comments and questions. So first of all, Kate, how has it been coming into? I know what you just said about how great it was, but you're coming into a new syst, a new system, you're coming into a new school, and you're coming into a very unique situation. Have you gotten the support that you feel like you need from the school committee, from the town, from the administration to be successful?
Yes, to, to all of those. What I have to say so confidently to everybody is that it has been a privilege and an honor working with the admin team. I mean, talk of, I'm a hard worker and I have joined a team of just truly dedicated professionals that are in it for the same reason that I am of, we want to do right by these kids. I also feel it's been an absolute privilege to follow Mike's footsteps and work with the IGO staff. They are an amazing group of educators. They are dedicated, just like Diana was saying, during the day and when they're home. These, they put these kids first every single day and it's, I'm proud to be part of this team. Is, is it a wild ride? I'll be honest, absolutely. Every day is different, we don't know what we don't know yet. But I, I feel very much part of the Foxborough team and, and I, and I'm glad I'm here.
Great, thank you. And Mike, I'll, I'll ask you a slightly modified version of that same question with your transition. Do you have what you need from the school committee, from, you know, the town to be successful at the Taylor?
I do, thank you, yeah. It, you know, it's a wonderful team that we have, administrative, teachers, families, and of course, the greatest students. You know, I'd like to personally say thank you to the school committee, because when I look at our model that we have, especially at the elementary level, and having our students with us every day is absolutely tremendous. The relationships that have been built, you know, and very intentionally, we focused on that social, emotional. And it, you know, even though it was still highlighted, as Dr. Berdus mentioned, the connections. you know, even though it was still highlighted, as Dr. Berdus mentioned, the connections. The relationships between the teachers and, and the students are fantastic. We're focusing on literacy and math. Um, I can tell you, I haven't had one visitor to my office for unexpected behavior, and I think that's across all three schools, because what we're finding is that, you know, the sizes of the classes, you know, and the students that distancing. It'd be a fascinating research paper, just sort of probe into the why there, but, um, you know, we're getting down to business every day, but we're also making it feel and sound and look like an elementary school as best we can. So, um, you know, echoing what Kate said, feel, you know, blessed to be here and very fortunate.
Thank you. Um, can I keep going?
Yes.
Because I, I was, I was like, ready for this, right? So one, I just want to take a step back. I think I, I ran into Dr. Berdus the other day in the school offices, and I had shared this with her. Um, as tough as this all is, um, and Dr. Mello, you'll probably appreciate me, maybe you'll appreciate me saying this more than anybody else, because we've known each other longer, I think, than everybody but, but Michelle, and we go way back too, but, um, uh, as tough as all this is, when you look at this, Mike, what you just said, this is a huge, huge success story, um, in, in my opinion, right? So, and where, where you guys have all repositioned yourselves, the, the students, your, the families that you work with, the educators that you work with, from top to bottom, you get these, I mean, yes, there are glitches, right? There are rough spots, but what you're doing and what we're seeing our families doing and our students doing is really, really, really exciting, right? It's not easy. It's not har-, I mean, excuse me, it's not easy. It is completely unpredicted and not something that any of you could prepare for, but the way that you have all incorporated it and tried to create a new model of success in education or in public education is really, really something that I hope that you all, for the rest of your days, are feel very, very proud about. Um, and I didn't realize I was going to be as like sandboxy as I coming off when I said, I, I'm just, I mean, I'm just, I, I, I work with people all over the world, um, every single day, and I am on, we talk about screen time, and I'm sure many other, uh, you know, parents or whatever can relate to this. I'm on the phone from like usually eight in the morning till seven or eight o'clock at night, literally Madrid, London, Australia, New Zealand, California, Chicago, all over the world. We all talk about what our kids are doing in school. And I, one, because of the, you know, being on the school committee, I feel like I have a, you know, a little bit closer to it than perhaps other parents might be. Um, but I can tell you, I don't, I don't run across any other parent or any other town or system that is having, whether it's public or private, whether it's in North America, whether it's in Spain, I don't know any other system that I think is seeing this kind of community success that we're seeing. I'm sure they're out there, um, because, you know, everybody does what their intents are, right? But I, it's, I, it's so easy to be proud of what this town and y'all are doing. Um, so, okay, I'll stop on that one. But anyway, I just think it's, it's really, I listen to you talk and I watch you and I, and, and, um, and what I, why I wanted you to stay, Aaron, because I wanted to compliment you, because I'm sure when you took this role on several years ago, you, in your wildest dreams, probably had no idea that this is what you were going to be doing. Um, you know, maybe pieces of it, but not having, you know, this kind of impact on a day-to-day basis, direct impact across so many different pieces of our population. So, congratulations, thank you. Um, I, I hope that you get enough of that. I know that. And I hope that you don't, when people experience the technology issues that they experience, hell, it's technology, right? My, I, sorry, she's going to kill me. She doesn't watch, so it's okay. Um, my wife calls me when she can't get the Bluetooth to connect to her car when she's driving, right? Um, she will kill me if anybody's watching and they repeat this. Do not, okay? I'll deny it. Um, Mike Weber. Um, anyway, so what you deal with on a daily basis is difficult. Um, and I just think it's so cool, again, how you're impacting everybody, um, and this whole success story as, as the technology backbone is, is just incredible. So thank you. Okay, so a couple more questions. I'll stop on that part. Um, a couple more questions. Um, sorry, I had, I had some sugar before I came. Um, as far as, you've said, some students have moved from fully remote, so from cohort D, back into A, B, or C. Rough idea of how many that is?
We started off with 150.
Okay.
Students, and we're at 137.
Okay. And has anybody, I don't imagine, but has anybody requested to move out of either cohort A, B, or C and into the fully remote?
Yes, we've had some at the high school level.
Okay. And can I ju-, the reason I'm asking this, the, anecdotally, um, I have heard from parents, particularly of kids at the high school level that are in the fully remote, how much they are enjoying that experience. Um, and it was completely what they did not expect, so it's exceeded their expectations. Again, anecdotal, and I don't know whether it's Greenfield or Teca or a combination. I assume just based on population, it's probably a combination. Um, uh, and I have no other parents that have expressed interest in who, where their kids are in one of the hybrid cohorts, expressing interest in moving into that. So I just think that's a really, because at beginning, when we were first proposing this, I know people were very concerned about that. Um, uh, and the feedback, as far as like what would the quality of the education be like and, um, but there has been some really po-, again, anecdotal, um, everything I've heard is, or from, has been very positive about that experience. Not necessarily what they want long-term for their student, but as a solution for the time that we're in now, um, it has been very, very positive. So, I was just wondering if you've gotten any feedback on?
No, at the elementary level, across all three schools, we've seen students come back. Once they saw the elementary classrooms and that they're six feet apart, and, um, they were nervous to begin with. And, and in some cases, we've had parents that have said that their child chose to go fully remote, and then they started to see their friends and they wanted to be back. So it's, again, parents all have very different reasons for selecting what they need for their own personal needs. But at the elementary level, we've seen students come back, um, into the hybrid mode, because they feel confident in the safety protocols and procedures, and they were in a place where they could. Some, some families can't for, for, for other reasons. And then at the high school level, um, we've seen, uh, less, less than a handful of students that have gone into the fully, um, the cohort D.
Right.
For personal reasons.
Mm-hmm. Excellent. No, I, it's just an interesting, like I said, the feedback had been very positive. Um, as far as when people's feedback is more constructive, um, what are, how are you identifying trends with that? Not necessarily in the survey. I know, you know, people, we encourage people all the time, if you have a question, if you have a problem, if you see an opportunity, don't wait for the survey to come out, you know, contact the teacher, contact, you know, someone at the schools, contact someone in the school offices, whatever. What are we doing with all that to see, you know, are there other themes that are coming out? Are there things that we do need to be addressing? Um, I know that the Teams versus WebEx is one of those pieces. We didn't wait for the survey. We knew that that was happening, right? Um, or not we, y'all knew, um, I guess will be too specific. Uh, but what are we doing with that, that other feedback that we get?
I, I think, you know, first, what you said is always go to the teacher, because they're the one working directly with the students. And, you know, we, we're, um, one of the reasons we didn't have a teaching and learning highlight tonight was because it's parent-teacher conferences. So at this point in time, um, and just speaking with some of the teachers I've, I spoke with yesterday and today, that's been a great way for parents to be able to express, you know, some of the things that teachers may not have been aware of. And at the same time, for teachers to be able to kind of calm parents down to say, it's okay. Look at how much they have learned, you know, as far as, because it, it does look differently. Um, so always to the teacher, because they're going to be able to be the one that's going to know the student best. And then we always, we have other, you know, layers, obviously. We have curriculum directors, we have department heads, we have assistant principals, principals, um, all of us here. We're, I would say we're an open-door policy everywhere.
Right.
And I don't know if principals want to add anything else, you know, they are thinking about the, the question that was posed.
I think our counselors have been a tremendous resource, you know, and I, I think, you know, my experience with talking with families, sometimes they feel they're the only ones facing the struggles, and I think it's sometimes just comforting to know that, you know, they're not, and we're doing the best that we can to listen. And if we are able to help out, um, it's rewarding. And sometimes, unfortunately, we're just able to listen and just hope that it can get better, um, and offer our advice and guidance. But, uh, the counselors and the mental health, especially this time of year as well, we realize with the holidays, different stress is not seeing. It looks much different for everybody. Um, so, you know, we're, we're preparing for that as well.
Thank you. My last question, and this is back for you, Aaron, sorry. How is that rollout going? I, I know my, uh, I have a junior in high school, and he came up with the, with the laptop last week, which I, was earlier than I expected, which is a nice little bonus, right? Um, but how is that going? Is that?
So the deployment's going, it's going pretty well so far. So we've received about 1,150, um, devices in, in districts so far. Um, we did, um, we have made some changes in terms of wanting to get the devices out as, as quickly as we can. As Dr. Berdus, um, mentioned earlier today, we, we did deploy some devices at the eighth grade. Uh, with having high school students learning remotely this week, it seemed like a, a good opportunity. We have the equipment and to get them out to students. Um, in terms of student devices, uh, we, we've deployed, uh, about 400 devices, um, at the high school level, because, um, it's a little, it's a little trick here. So some juniors did get some devices this week, some seniors. Um, depending on the, the course and the grade level, um, there are some students that are taking, you know, courses that are maybe more predominantly taken by another grade level, so they were able to, to get those devices. Um, really, I don't want to jinx myself, uh, but, but things, things have gone very well. The, the teacher deployments, um, started last week, um, and then within a day, we started deploying the students at the high school, um, and deploying to, uh, to the eighth grade cohort, um, A and B the last couple of days at, at the middle school. And it's really been, it's really been pretty quiet.
Right.
So.
I'm not for you.
In terms of the, the preparation that's been done, um, I, I think that's, it's showing to, to pay off. Um, and really the, the, really it is a team effort, though. I, I think, as I listen to, to themes, right, tonight, um, it's, it really is a tremendous partnership between our teachers, our students, our administrators, and, and our community. You know, whether it's, it's, um, our secretaries that stepped up this past couple of weeks and helped us assign laptops, um, and, and apply inventory labels to laptops, so we can, can get them out more quickly, or our custodial staff that's been helping us move equipment around. Um, you know, really, it's, it's, uh, you know, custodial logistics, technology, right? Um, it, it's really been all hands on deck, um, and, and it will continue to be the, the next couple of weeks. In terms of, um, you know, projected, you know, deployment timelines from, from this point on, um, we do have all of the high school devices in building. I looked, um, I was, I was actually, one of the, the benefits to having things in the cloud is you have access to that data much more quickly. Uh, I'm able to track how quickly the devices are, are being, um, prepared, but also how quickly we're, we are, um, ready to deploy them. So at the high school, once students come back on, on Monday, um, you know, the, the laptops will be ready and, and foreseeably by, by Wednesday of, of next week, after Thanksgiving, all of the high school will be done. Um, and potentially by the end of the, the following week, um, all the middle school will be done as well, so.
That's phenomenal.
Moving, moving along quite well.
Great, thank you for that.
I'd just like to make one comment when you were talking about the amount of when Aaron thinking about what he was coming into. I, I think we do have to recognize districts to go one-to-one, they do that over a period of time. For us to go one-to-one all at once, not to mention in a pandemic, but just going one-to-one, the amount of work beside, behind the scenes, and it's, it's seven days a week. I, I think the efforts really need to be recognized, because scaling that is just an enormous amount of work, and people really don't understand the complexities that are there and to do it all at once.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm done now.
Are you done?
Finally, I think it's way over.
Well, we are over time on this topic, but, um, I, I guess I just want to end by, by thanking you, Kate, Mike, Michelle, Karen, and Diana, and Aaron for being here today. Thank you for your day-to-day work, uh, minute-by-minute, day-to-day work in the school with kids. Thank you for your preparation and planning for those meetings and the thinking ahead, but also thank you to your attention to this survey for parents. Uh, we, we've sent these surveys out numerous times in the past seven or eight months. We've gotten good feedback, clear feedback, actionable, um, and, and to spend time with a survey takes time too. So thanks for your attention to our, the parents in the survey. This, it's, it's been a really great, um, effort, uh, put forward. So thank you so much. And Dr. Berdus and Dr. Mello as well too. Thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you for coming.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, Karen.
Hi.
Everybody.
Well, great. Um, let's go on to the final agenda. Well, we have two final ones. Agenda item of acceptance of donations. We have a couple donations, I think, on the mark here. Taylor, uh, we have a Taylor PTO donation of $6,000 for the guided reading library.
Yes. So this is one from, obviously from the PTO, and we think about what are opportunities for enrichment and extras that, uh, because that's what our PTOs really look for something. So this, um, guided reading library is so many different titles of books to add. So the first question might be, well, is this something that would be in our budget? We do provide for these kinds of things, but these are the additional, the enrichment, all of the extra to be able, all different types of titles and levels. So really appreciative of them recognizing that and providing that resource to the Taylor students.
We only have three members on the meeting. Brent did have to leave, uh, left the meeting. So would anyone like to move to accept this donation from the Taylor PTO? Tina, I have you with your hand up first to mo-, to move.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the, uh, donation from the Taylor PTO in the amount of $6,000 for the guided reading library.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Three O to thank the Taylor School PTO with gratitude for their $6,000 donation. Thank you. And next was a donation of, uh, some sound equipment, sound speaker equipment, amplifier.
Yeah, so, um, the Outlaws Lacrosse Group, which is a, a number of members of the community, John Stamatoth brought it to Kami, um, is a pair of Yamaha speakers and a, a channel Crete mixer with amplifier. Um, they no longer needed it. They, uh, thought it would be a good use for the high school. High school, obviously, with its number of band, uh, components, always can use additional equipment that allows them to, to split up. So, um, you know, it's a, it's a very welcomed donation, and, uh, it has a value of about $500 now. So, uh, we'd like to accept that and, and let the band and the chorus and others use these, uh, this equipment.
Great.
I'll, I'll do it this time. I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude the donation of the, uh, equipment from, uh, the Outlaws Lacrosse Organization.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Tina. Thank you. All in favor? Three O O again, uh, with gratitude to the Outlaws Lacrosse for the sound equipment. Thank you so much. Other matters?
Yeah, we have one. Mike, can you cue it up? So, um, we have been finally coming to the end of, uh, the concession stand and, and the Sam Burns Field, uh, process. Um, so I thought today we'd, we'd kind of give you a quick, uh, show of what we've done recently. So the building itself is complete. Um, it's, uh, gotten its final CO to allow us to, to use it on a permanent basis. The only area that isn't truly completed, uh, as far as equipment, is the, uh, inside of the concession area. And again, we're going to be stealing as much as we can out of the borough before, um, that is, uh, taken apart and the new equipment's brought into there, which will give us a lot of stainless steel counters, uh, an oven unit, and a couple other, uh, items of that nature, um, which will save us a lot of money and obviously put in much better equipment than you would ever probably put into a, a concession stand in general. Um, to the right side, where you see the yellow kind of wall in the middle there, that's actually the main entrance way to a, uh, two-gang, uh, sized bathrooms. Uh, left side is the, the female side with, uh, 10 ba-, 10 toilets and, and 10 sinks. Right side is the, the men's side. So if you can go to the next, uh, slide. Yeah, so, tough picture, because it was kind of dark at the time, but basically, as you can see, 10 sinks on one side, the, the toilet fixtures on the other side, fairly good-sized room. rooms, natural light into them. And they're all done. Unfortunately, this doesn't show well what they're done, and the high school colors, yellow walls, blue partitions. And really, we did a polished floor, a concrete floor, so it's very easy to maintain and keep. The final piece to the whole thing, the next slide that hopefully Mike can show, was the little landscaped area that's just as you'll be coming into the field area. And we really wanted a dividing section, because the main area where the double gates are and that paved areas, that's really for the teams to enter into the fields, and it's for, you know, emergency medical to be able to back into if there's an issue. So we wanted that divided from really what was going to be the spectator side. So by putting in this little walkway area, we've created that division. And if you remember back, when we started this whole thing, which seems like about 100 years ago, we did a couple of different fundraisers. The one fundraiser was to actually have people make donations and buy t-shirts type of thing. And so in the front right-hand mulch pile there, you can see a little concrete section, there's actually a plaque that will be going there for the people that made all of those donations on the first part of this. The second part was that we sold, and thank you very much to Tina Bellinger for kind of pushing this, was the selling of bricks for the walkway. So Mike, if you move forward, you'll see that that center section basically is represented by all those bricks that people had put money towards. And obviously, the money was more than for the bricks. It actually gave us money to not only do this landscaping, but also part of the building. So the two or three fundraising things that we did was really to show that the community was really behind the field and had an interest in getting this done. And this was kind of a nice little payback to those organizations, whether it was families or different groups that, you know, put up some money for it. And it really did come out quite nice. And as I said, I think from my perspective, it really is kind of the finishing touch to this whole piece of a project. And, you know, I think at this point, when you look at the field, they really, probably the only thing left in the future for the town to consider, and that is, as the field gets used more and more, and as you have potentially more participants at the field from a spectator point of view, you would potentially look at additional bleacher systems down the road. We can see 850. We have the beautiful press box. I think Mike from cable will attest to the fact that that has worked out phenomenally well for all the filming that they've been doing. Gives them all the power they want, they're in a controlled environment. And when it comes down to, in the future, when we actually have two teams, you know, with, with coaches up there and everything, you know, it's a three-segment press box. So it's really well-designed that way. And we think, quite honestly, it really will present a lot to the school system. The real nice part about this is this was one thing that the schools were evaluated on a while ago by, when it went through its, the, no, its assessment. And it was a weakness that we didn't have a full campus.
NIES.
The NIES, I'm sorry, study. So I think, you know, now what we've done is we've created the full campus at the Foxborough High School. We have eliminated the need for kids to transport to the Hearn for, whether it's field and track or any other sports, soccer and stuff like that. And we've made it, quite honestly, something that I think is very easy to maintain, because everything was done with very high-end quality products and with, in mind not having to have to deal with, you know, potential problems from, you know, just decay and stuff like that. So I think it's well-built. I think it's, you know, the town should be proud of it. We did it over many years to kind of mitigate the shock of having to do it all in one dollar factor, but the community did support us in each one of those phases. I think if you go back to the beginning, you remember it was turf field first, then it was the bleachers and the track, then it was the concession. And again, doing it over all this time, you have this on one side, and then you have the Sam Burns kind of monument, memorial area on the other side. And I think it's just a very well-balanced, you know, setup.
Well, thanks for showing us the photos and for a great, what a great report, too. Great to see the bricks, as well as all the, all the other things that are finally coming, that we finally got together. It's great. This was wonderful. And you're so right about a full campus. What a great opportunity for a high school, to have a full campus and facility where all the kids can stay around and get where they need to go. Really great.
Perfect as we're heading into Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly, exactly. Thanks for your work in the bricks, Tina.
Oh, thank you. And hopefully, fingers crossed, next Thanksgiving, we'll be there for a game. Right? Fingers crossed.
Right.
Yes.
Any other other matters?
I actually have a couple. I know it's late, but I wanted to report back on the MASCE conference since I was our delegate, and it went well. I did, so there's a new, there'll be a new president next year. Ellen Holmes was elected president of the MASCE. And then the resolutions, there were 10. I know you all got all the paperwork, and I won't go through all 10 of them, but the first nine were all approved, the last one was tabled for next, until next year. One thing, though, I wanted to mention for future reference was that, and I'm, you know what, I've been on the committee, this is my ninth year on the committee, and Bevy has been our representative every other time, and she has represented us incredibly well. But I don't think I ever realized what went into some of the voting matters until I was there and voting. And other school committee members were debating the different resolutions and were referencing consensus votes that their committees had taken. So maybe next year, in advance of next year's MASCE conference, the committee might want to think about taking, sitting down and making it an agenda item to just go through the resolutions and come to a consensus as a committee. Because there were delegates who were voting what their committee had voted and, and not their personal opinion. I kind of went with my gut, and I think, you know, we share a lot of the same views on, on school matters, but just for future reference, I think that would, that would be beneficial to the delegate and the committee as a whole to talk about the things that are discussed at the conference, because they are all important to all of us. They're all issues that we care about. So if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thanks for going to, I've gone my past couple of years myself, too, but thanks for representing us and bringing that idea of a consensus vote to us. Thanks.
Well, it was four hours on Zoom, so it was a different kind of conference than everybody is used to, but I, it was interesting and, you know, I learned a lot. But I think that is something for you all, for us all, to think about as a committee next year. I did have a couple other things. Let me see here. I wanted, just to mention the COVID dashboard. Dr. Burdos, I think it looks great, and it was a good move as we move forward in this pandemic timeframe to have that COVID dashboard up on the main FPS website. And I wanted to thank you for doing that, and I didn't know if you wanted to address that. And also whether there were any, any testing that will have to go on for people who might be traveling over Thanksgiving.
Yes, I had that, thank you, as far as to mention. So the dashboard, which is on the main webpage, you can look to see it's updated on Wednesdays. It's done weekly, which is in line with what the state DPH is doing. And so, you know, questions are asked, well, can you just update it daily? That, it's, the amount of time that is related to COVID issues, people really don't have any idea the amount of time that is there. And at the same time, updating, because you have active cases, and then you have those that are no longer active. So having a certain date of the week makes it to where it's smoother as far as to know what's active and what's not. But that is on the main webpage, one of the things mentioned at the last meeting. If your student has a positive person in their classroom, we will send that out to families. It's, we're not sending it out to the full school community. We found that some people were getting, you know, confused, particularly where we had a number of days in a row at the high school. And honestly, too, many of our cases, when we're sending them out, I can give you an example of what's happened today. So we did send out for the middle school. We had our first case of a person at the middle school today. But that particular individual's not been in school for over a week, so there's not, there's no context. But yet, we still sent it out to families of sixth graders to say that it was a person in the classroom, although that person, which we don't identify, whether it's a staff or a student, hasn't even been there, but yet we still send it out. But always look to the main webpage, and you can see the numbers that are there for transparency purposes. And then there's currently only two states that are not considered high-risk for traveling. And so as people are getting ready, we know what the governor has stated as far as travel orders. I sent out this past Friday to families a reminder that if you are traveling out of state, you do need to complete the travel order form and get tested for your students before they can return back to school with a negative test result, and they can do that 72 hours before. And if they don't, then they do have to quarantine. So we are doing everything we can in schools to keep students in school. We know that transmission, the evidence is not that it's happening in schools. It's coming from the outside in. And for us to be able to keep kids in school, which is our goal, and we know that came out loud and clear in the survey, they want students back. We need families to really abide by the travel orders and all of the precautionary measures that are there so we can have students in school. So that was sent out by myself on Friday, but again, you can go even right to the DPH website and see that there as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I just want to jump on that real quick as, as a reminder for families, we certainly do appreciate all the support about trying to keep your students safe and your, our educators safe with this, with the holiday weekend. It is very easy. I've seen it in my own house over this week, even though my children have all tested positive, as soon as they got home, they had arranged for my, my adult children that are coming home for the holiday all had rapid tests over the weekend. It is very easy to fall out of the mode of protecting as they try to visit with their friends. So we have to remain as diligent as we can, and it will be very easy, as we try to enjoy our families this week, with this holiday, to not be. So--
Yeah.
Like I said, I've seen it in my own house over the past couple of days, how we're just not being as cautious as we should be. So we're trying to remind ourselves that we have to, we have to remain diligent.
That's a good reminder, and thank you, Rob. I appreciate, I mean, that's why I'm not in the meeting room with you today, and we're waiting for, my husband and son came back from Pennsylvania on, on Friday, and the earliest tests they could get were Sunday, so we haven't gotten their results yet. So I, just being cautious, and I'm here. So I think your, your reminder is a, is a good one for everybody, you know, especially going into the holiday week here.
Thank you, Tina. All good?
I just had one other thing that I wanted to mention, and this will be coming out through communications, through principals later on. But, you know, there's conversations of if we were to have a snow day, would that be a remote learning day? And what, as of right now, at this point in time, because we don't have devices out for everyone, if we were to have a snow day tomorrow, it would be a snow day. It would not be a remote learning day. And that may change depending on what the winter brings and what that looks like going forward. But the first couple of snow days, if we have them, they will be snow days. They will not be remote learning days, but it will be fluid, and we'll take that as we move forward. And the message, when I send that out, it will be clear. But just wanted to go ahead and just mention that, because last year, our first snow day was in December. So I just wanted to go ahead and mention that.
We should have known then what we were looking at, right?
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. Thanks for a great, great meeting. Be safe, be smart, and what he said. So thank you so much. Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Tina, motion to adjourn, seconded by Rob. All, thank you very much. Good night, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Good night, happy Thanksgiving.
Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.